Session of the Stafford County Planning Commission Order, I'd ask all to rise. I'll lead the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Cohen.
Lord, we seek your guidance in the business that's before us. As we plan for the future, help give us vision. As we deal with people, give us love. Where there's disagreement, give us tolerance. Lord, thank you for the privilege of allowing us to gather here this evening. We ask that you watch over those who protect this nation, those who protect us here in this county, the men and women in uniform of the armed forces, the men and women in uniform of the Sheriff's Department and Emergency Services. We thank you for the many blessings you provide. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cohen, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Gibbons?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
And myself. Just one absence, sir.
Yes, and I know Mr. Appicello is ill this evening. We keep them all in our thoughts and prayers as well. That all turns out well. With that, I would move on to declarations of disqualification. Is there any item this evening, any member needs to identify a declaration of disqualification or any other element? Very good. Move on to public presentations. This is an opportunity for a member of the public to speak on any item except for those items that are scheduled for public hearing. So if you have a comment, if you'd like to speak on anything other than items one through six, you may come forward and do so at this time. There will be opportunity for public comment through the public hearing portion for those items, one through six. If you do come forward for public presentation, we ask that you state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. It is an address to the board. It's not an interactive dialogue, but it is an opportunity to present issues or items you may wish to speak on. A green light will come on after you state your name and address indicating three minutes available to speak. A yellow light will come on when there's one minute remaining, and then when the red light starts flashing, we would just ask that you could wrap up and conclude your comments. Anyone like to come forward for the public presentations?
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road. I was going through documents on this Saratoga Woods, and I found some interesting papers. And I'd like very much Stacy, she might make copies to, for them, or Kathy. What this is, when the property was up for sale, thanks for you, for them, please, those people up there. Anyway, when the property was up for sale, when McAllister eventually purchased it, but before that was done, there was an engineering study, an environmental study done, and it came up with 33 actual lots, based on the usable lots. Okay, when you look at this document, you'll see that it was a valid environmental study, like I said, and a engineering study. Now, since that time, after McAllister purchases, we all of a sudden went up to 61, and now we're down to 58. However, this, this other document I had given you all before, I don't know if remember this, I think, I don't think, Darrell, you were on, yeah, you did get a copy. Anyway, this has the topal and the soil composition, and according to DCR, there's only 20 acres that don't have any limitations on the soil and the usage. So we need to bring them into it if you want to, to have someone come and speak. I think the 22nd is our last public hearing on it, and we need to have them, oh, almost done, anyway, to have you all hear what they have to say about the soil. And also, okay, you said I couldn't talk on cluster development, real quick, we need to have something done immediately on the cluster development because the way it's written right now, we tried to get our supervisor to go to, how to get a change to it, to state that there should not be cluster developments in an area that isn't in the USA, the urban service area. I talked with Dale Evans today, and he doesn't know what year, how many years out, three to four to five years before they would even consider, what's the matter?
No, no.
Oh, anyway, anyway, it'd be three to five years before they'd even consider having funding, oh, there it goes. Okay, but please take a look at changing that, going to the General Assembly through how, okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any item except for items one through six?
Donna LaRoe, 107 Estates Drive. I'm here for the Saratoga Cluster Subdivision. We just had one done, the first one that was ever done in Stafford built behind me, and I have a million-plus-dollar home, and my wife wasn't real happy about having three homes right behind our house. But I'd just say, we preserved a hun, the developer who did it's preserved 100 acres of land, which I don't want Hartwood looking like throughout 610. I grew up on 610. It, it doesn't look like Stafford anymore. The cluster subdivisions develop half the property. These guys have the right to develop the 200 acres or whatever. By doing the clusters, we're saving property in Stafford. That way, when you're looking at it from Google Earth or whatever, you're seeing green still. And that's the habitats for that wildlife or whatever. It's a great, great program. I mean, I didn't think I was gonna like it at first when it went behind us. I, you know, I said, well, I have a choice to buy land. I could've bought the land behind me, but I didn't, so I really couldn't complain about it. But now it's there. McAllister did a great job developing it, for one, and they were real, they dealt with our HOA and make sure that they didn't disrupt our lives because their subdivision went through our subdivision. And it was just a, it's good for the county. I mean, it really, it was good for the constituents, because we're not having, I mean, they're gonna have 58 homes. If, if they can get people to come in and say, hey, we can get 58 perk sites and 58 wells, whether you all prove it or not, they're developing it. The only difference is they're gonna develop 198 acres, not 100, or 99 or whatever. So there's less development, more land, county's still gonna get their taxes, everyone benefits from this. The only ones that don't benefit, yeah, maybe the people that are right around where they're clustering it, but instead of dealing with 198 acres of people, you're dealing with a cluster section. That's my opinion. I wanted to put it out there because I know a lot of people are gonna say, oh, I don't want this. It's coming no matter what. They have by right, they have a right to do it. Whether you stop it or not, it's, these people can develop it. So why not make it less development, have more place for the wildlife? We're gonna see 58 wells. We're gonna see 58 households. Whether you all say they can't cluster or not, it's coming. He owns the land now, he's bought it. So I just wanted to give my opinion, and thanks for listening to me. And I think you all are doing a great job. You're really trying to control things, but same time with making sense of it. I appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on any item, except for items one through six?
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Dan Murrin, 99, Tracy Lane, speaking on Saratoga Woods as well. First and foremost, I'm a big fan of the cluster development in the right areas. I believe Saratoga Woods is the right area for a cluster development. I'm an outdoorsman. I like the environment, and I like wildlife. And I've seen what Eastern Land Corporation, Mr. McAllister, did at another development, which is adjacent to my home, Hartwood Landing. It's absolutely beautiful. If anyone has not seen it before and after, I think he's gone above and beyond, restored upon, a lot of nice things. The way he's landscaped it into the environment, it just looks very natural. I'm, I'm in favor of the cluster development. I'm in favor of Saratoga Woods. I think, as the gentleman said, it's common. So if you take a look at what he did off of Hartwood Road, I think we would all be benefited by having that in our community. He as well, Mr. McAllister, he said he reached out to his neighborhood, he reached out to our neighborhood as well to make sure that we're on board, and he worked well with us. So just wanted to, for the record, let you know I'm in favor of it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Pam Scruggs, and I live at 286 Mount Olive Road, and I'm here to talk about Saratoga Woods. I live next door to the 198-acre property that you guys are considering this, this evening. And I'm feeling kinda helpless. I've pursued several avenues that I, everything I could think of to sort of change or influence the outcome of this property, from trying to buy it from Mr. Stradley, myself, to working with, you know, Mr. Snellings, and it seems like we keep hitting dead ends every turn. So now I'm appealing to you to look for creative ways to help me and my neighbors ensure that we continue to have the use and enjoyment of our investments in this county. You know, I'm that person that this guy too before mentioned. I mean, I'm likely to lose some enjoyment of my particular property because I'll have five new home sites abutting my, my home. And, you know, unless there's a way for you to influence how those prop home sites are placed on the landscape. But really, the main threat to the use of my house, and I think one of the main threats to the neighbors, is the level of development in the area with a vulnerable source of water. You know, if our wells dry up, we lose the use and value of our properties, which is, for most of us, the biggest investment. You know, we lose our homes. And, and, you know, we've, there are problems with existing wells in our area. We have neighbors who have had to drill multiple wells in order to get any water, and when they got it, it's low flow and it's mineralized. The folks that, most of the folks that have deep-water wells that I'm familiar with have mineralized water, even if it's regular flow. And, you know, we hear of, and I haven't been able to corroborate this, but here are people who had to walk away from home sites just north of us on Poplar several years ago because they couldn't pull water out of the wells. So, you know, Oakley Reserve's putting 60 more wells, or at least they're looking to. And so, I, I mean, I'm asking your help, and so, you know, at this point, so I don't have to be asking for help when my well is dry, and I just implore you to, please help us find a way to keep our properties safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Antoinette Frankie. I live at 329 Mount Olive Road, not very far from the Pam who just spoke with you. Yeah, I also have concerns about 58 more homes on Mount Olive Road, which means, you know, all the extra wells. The last time there was a water study done was more than 10 years ago, and I think that, you know, before you go allowing more development, you ought to make sure that there's gonna be enough water for everybody. You know, as Pam just said, there are, we've already had neighbors who have water problems, and nobody wants to be without water. I mean, that's one of the necessities of life, right? You wouldn't wanna be without your water. And we don't have city water coming out to us, we're an agricultural area. So I really think that needs, that, that another study needs to be done on the water tables to make sure that there's enough for everybody, and before they start development. And I also have concerns about the infrastructure, but I'm sure you've heard this before. You know, Mount Olive Road is a small road because we are zoned agricultural. And if we got 58 more homes using traffic on that road, we're gonna have to do something about the road. I was looking at where the present entrance is to that property is right on a blind curve, and all I can see is car accidents coming out of there. So I don't know if they're planning to change the entrance to the place or what, but definitely something would, would need to change, and just to make it safe for everybody driving on the road. But seriously, again, I wanna say that I think there needs to be another water study, and I think this needs to be definitely looked into and approved before you start building homes. And we all, I mean, I, one of my neighbors has kind of a shallow well, and it was a few years ago when we had kind of a dry summer, he didn't have any water. And we heard from other people farther down the road that we're out of water. So I still don't know if the, if, you know, I think you just need to check this out before you just, you know, put, because every home, well, how many, how many gallons does each home use a day? You know, y'all know the math, and y'all need to, like, check that out, you know? So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Jim Grooms, 513 Mount Olive Road. Would just like the commission to consider the water study, and just in, in favor of just another look. We do have a deep-water well that runs dry. I don't know what this will do with 58 more homes, whether it'll affect it or not, would like to know. Our neighbor that is directly to our side, that is closer to Kellogg Mill, one area over, drilled four wells at the building of their home to try to find acceptable water, still low-flow rate and mineralized. So I would just like the commission to know that I'm in favor of another water study. If we could take a look at it to just be as informed as possible as we go forward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on from public presentations to the public hearing items. First public hearing item is COM.
Jimmy, can we put two of these together, although they were different sites, but they're the same type of permit?
Is, is the present, are the presentations set for that, to do one or two?
They're not, we have two separate staff members that worked on them.
Right, okay. All right. So two, there are two different sites, two different staff members, two different presentations. Okay. COM 1515-0546, I understand the point, trying to move them forward if we could on the common items.
Thank you very much, sir.
Comprehensive plan, compliance review for the telecom tower at Stone River Water Tank with AT&amp;T?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. The applicant, AT&amp;T Mobility, has requested a review to determine whether the location of the telecommunications facility on top of the Stone River Water Tank on Assessor's Parcel 30S-2D is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2232. The water tower is a county facility located on a county-owned parcel within the Stone River community. The site is located on the north side of Jason Lane, approximately 1,000 feet west of Green Ridge Drive, and almost 2,000 feet to the east of Jefferson Davis Highway. The parcel is zoned R1 and is surrounded by single-family homes and community recreation amenities owned by the Stone River Homeowners Association, all in the R1 zoning district. AT&amp;T Mobility has determined that the wireless network in this area has deficient coverage. The proposed facility will help enhance the coverage within the AT&amp;T network. The applicant is proposing to install 12 panel antennas on top of the existing water tower. The water tower is 159 feet in height, and the antennas will be located to a maximum of 168 feet. The design of the water tower allows for the equipment cabinets to be installed on a proposed platform inside the water tower structure. The county has a contract with RCC Consultants to insist, to assist in evaluating telecommunications facilities proposals due to the technical nature of these facilities. The application was evaluated using the criteria identified in the telecommunications plan, which is an element of the comprehensive plan, and the technical details of the proposal. The RCC report concludes that the request is consistent with the citing priorities identified in the comprehensive plan for new telecommunications facilities, one of which is co-location of facilities on water towers. Additionally, the request is in accordance with the telecommunications plan recommendations regarding overall coverage objectives and design standards as described in Section 2.2 of the report. The applicant submitted an overall coverage plan in the form of radio frequency propagation maps, which were confirmed and verified in the RCC report. This map shows the existing AT&amp;T Mobility sites and coverage without the proposed site. And this map shows the coverage area with the proposed site. Additionally, RCC conducted an RF maximum permissible exposure analysis for the proposed antenna location. Section 2.4 of the report notes that there is no risk of exposure on the ground in areas surrounding the site. The report adds, however, that personnel working on the water tank within 18 feet of any antenna would exceed general public limits for exposure. Consequently, the top of the water tank should be considered a controlled environment, and protocols for the use of protective measures should be in place. A copy of this report with recommendations has been forwarded to the Utilities Department for their consideration of safety protocols. And finally, the report concludes that the proposal presents no impacts to the public safety communication system. Staff recommends that the request is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan and reiterates the conclusions of the report completed by RCC as positive findings regarding the request, and notes that there does not appear to be any negative findings concerning this proposal.
Okay, questions for staff, please? Yes, Mr. Gibbons?
Is there anything, I didn't see anything in the application that says when it's no longer needed, it will remove the?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gibbons, that, that would probably be a part of a conditional use permit, and this, this particular proposal, because it's co-located on an existing water tower, does not require a conditional use permit.
Don't follow that.
Um, sure.
Saying we can't put, okay, you're saying that that's gotta be placed on the CUP when he applies for that?
Mr. Gibbons, this particular application won't require a conditional use permit because it's a co-located site. They're putting it on the existing water tower.
That's zero two tonight so far, so.
Mr. Chair, I assume that's part might be in the lease language of some sort, I would imagine.
Yes, is there a lease agreement?
Mr. Chair, Mr. English, there isn't a lease agreement, and the applicant, the representative is here this evening. They may be able to answer that more quickly than I.
Yep, and we'll get to them in just a moment. Very good.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Bailey?
When the report was forwarded to Utilities, did they come back with any questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bailey, I'm not aware of any concerns on the Utilities Department's side.
Mr. Chair, I'll note that Mike Smith, our Director of Utilities, is here this evening for both of these cases if you have specific questions, but they have looked at it and have not related any issues. Their, the one concern about potential caution at the top of the towers, they're gonna include in their training protocol, so, but if you have specific questions, he's here.
Another question, at Development Review, I don't know that Fire and Rescue had a chance to evaluate. They were gonna take a little bit further a look at that. Did they have any concerns?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bailey, I have not received any additional concerns from Fire and Rescue.
And one final question, are there any security fencing, will that be required at the site?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bailey, the, all of the equipment will be located inside the tower, and I'm not aware of a requirement for the security fencing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Just to tag team with Ms. Bailey, you said you didn't hear any concerns from Fire and Rescue, but did you hear anything from them, one way or the other? I guess that sort of goes the next step of what she was asking.
Mr. Chairman, they, they did, they did not have a substantial concern in the Development Review Meeting. I do recall that they just were concerned with correct protocols being in place with equipment being located inside the water tower.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Gibbons?
I'll follow up one more time, but if the, who's here from Utilities?
Mr. Smith? Could you, could you come forward for just a moment? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
I still have the same question, so I'll ask it more direct. When you issue the agreement, do you put in there that when it's no longer needed or in use, that it's removed?
I was looking through the agreement, and I didn't see that part, but I'm sure, generally speaking, we have that in there, but I was not able to find it.
You think you could put it in there? Because a lot of towers are inoperable right now, and they're not coming down.
Right. Well, the water tower is gonna stay.
No, no, I'm saying when it's no longer in use, you got a lot of them on top of a tower. If it's no, if it's not in use and not needed, it should come off the property.
I agree with you.
Okay, we can also raise that to the applicant.
What's that?
You can also raise that to the applicant, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for staff? Very good. Applicant, please. There's a question here.
Good evening, my name's Phil Stettler, agent for AT&amp;T Mobility, 115 Old Columbia Road, Columbia, Maryland, 2046. And Commissioner Gibbons, I will attempt to answer your question. Typically, I don't have a copy of the lease agreement in front of me, but typically, the agreement is either 90 days or one calendar year.
For removal?
I would assume in this case, it's probably 90 days.
For removal, should?
For the removal of equipment if the site becomes inoperable or is no longer in use.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So it's on the record, it's something in there, 90 days or 100?
Correct, yep.
Okay, or a year, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Very good, thanks for the, good question. Any other questions for the applicant? Wonderful, thank you very much. And now there's an opportunity for public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, you may come forward and do so at this time. Again, you would come forward, state your name and your address, and then a green light will come on indicating three minutes, a yellow light would indicate a minute, and a red light, we would just ask you to try to conclude and wrap up your comments. Please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And to my neighbors. My name is Catherine Sulis, I live at 7 Winding Creek Road, and in 2012, I came before, I believe it was the Board at that time, to speak in opposition to a cell tower at the Bridle Lake Estates area, and a lot of my neighbors came with me. Tonight, I really wanted to just comment about the fact that I feel that Stafford's effort to market, as it were, several properties to gain income for the county, for a very wealthy county, is really a bad policy. I think the last thing a beautiful county like Stafford needs is more cell towers. There may be the occasional issue where a community does not have any coverage whatsoever, but as was just explained, this is to enhance coverage. It's a very high cell tower at approximately 16 stories high, 168 feet, I believe was mentioned. And I did notice in a corresponding article in Inside Towers, which is like a trade publication, either you folks put it up or the marketer Milestone put it up, that this would be for a 20-year period conceivably, and they mention in this publication that you had 60 county-owned properties, whereas the Freelance Star says that you had 50. But either way you look at it, I would like to say that from a health perspective, in the two years since I spoke to this issue, the, the detriments to overall health of a community are huge. They are substantiated even more now than they were two years ago. The scientific literature spans the gamut. You have numerous very fine institutions in Europe and the United States, definitely putting forth solid information, solid studies, that the average person living in, and I'll give this example, England Run, because that is the study I did two years ago, just for the heck of it, is overwhelmed with over 400 cell towers and antenna, giving a person way too much exposure to EMF, to zapping. Let's face it, our brains get zapped from the inside out, and this hastens and furthers Let's face it, our brains get zapped from the inside out, and this hastens and furthers all disease. Stafford County, although it was just voted to have good health in, again, the Freelance Star, suffers from several early deaths, as does this whole state. We are losing people very quickly. So whereas we might have good health relative to other counties, we don't have good health here. Look at the numbers, just read your obituary pages, we have way too many people dying early. Finally, economically speaking, it doesn't make good sense either, because the article mentions that if just five of these counties were leased, over a 15-year period, you would glean $2.8 million. This means that you would get approximately $187,000 per year, and again, that's for five properties. So if you did all of your properties, you would multiply that by 10, it still isn't that much money. Right now, the $187,000 per year would be about equivalent to the money that you take in from taxes on mobile homes, property taxes on mobile homes. It's the closest figure I could find, and your budget is just $190,000, whereas the school budget here is $141 million. That means that the money that prospectively you would get from five properties leased is just, literally, 1 one-thousandth of a percent of your total revenue. So I really don't understand why you would...
If you could begin to wrap up your comments, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, I want to thank you for listening. I do feel it's a quality of life issue, and people are waking up to the issue of too many cell towers because their children and their elderly are getting sick. Ultimately, what's going to happen there is you're going to lose property values, lessen your tax base, see people moving out, perhaps further out into the country, if there is such a place. And so I think overall, from the financial perspective, it just doesn't seem solid. You know, if you can prove otherwise, please do, but I would think that creatively, Stafford County has enough resources, enough assets, so that you don't have to trade the health of your community just to get money. If that's the problem, let's lessen the budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for listening.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
My name is Anthony Greer. I'm 27, Jason Lane. I live right across the street, and I didn't see any picture of what it would actually look like, but I'm picturing it would be like a crown of some sort. Is that correct? Aesthetically, well, you know what? When I come into my backyard, I'm sorry, when I come back to my backyard, I'm not going to feel like I want to see this structure. And like they said, it's to enhance. And you were talking about when, if, you know, if they don't need it anymore, they take it down. This is something that will be up forever. Technology advances, and if anything, they'll eat the possibility to put higher amplifiers for 5 GLT technology or whatever. Also, they were saying 18 feet, it's... They want, you know, you've got to be careful within 18 feet. That's our water up there, you know? And of course, H2O, hydrogen, oxygen, and then whatever chemicals we put in there, like the chlorine and stuff, I mean, I don't feel comfortable with it. Also, it is a fact that the 4GLT tower, AT&amp;T Verizon, whatever, it does have an adverse effect on the frequencies 711 to 748, which may not mean too much, but what happens is the homes around, the cable structure acts like an antenna, and it will affect files and Comcast as far as the channels, because everything's digital now. Me personally, if it's not needed, I prefer, you know, they have cell, I mean, you know, they have cell service right now. I mean, I'm against it, you know? I just don't, I don't care for it. And, you know, for all those reasons, you know? That's it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Good evening. I'm Deanna Smith. I live at 3 Kennesaw Drive. The house is right next to the park. I have two young children, a two-and-a-half-year-old and an 11-year-old, and we would love to continue to raise our family in this house. We have several neighbors who are putting their houses up for sale, and it's not something that I'm comfortable with. There's just not enough studies done, there's not enough information out there, and I've gone across the globe looking on the websites, looking and looking and looking for more information, and I just don't feel as if we have done our homework. This is too new of an industry for us to know what's going to happen. And by the time my son is, who's two-and-a-half-years-old, grows up, I will never be able to forgive myself for the issues that he might have with his health if I stay in this house. And I love Stafford County, and I want to retire here. I want to stay here for as long as I possibly can, but not at the risk of the health of my son. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Come back if the applicant would like to respond to any of the comments that were there. You can do so now. Okay, very good. I did have a question for staff. Would like to clarify, just to make sure I've got the math right, the, what they are putting up, the 12-panel antenna, is about nine feet tall, if I do the math correctly?
Mr. Chairman, yes. The maximum height will be 168 feet, but I think they noted in their application they're intending approximately 165 feet, so I guess it's...
So the water tower's about 159. They're looking at, in their application, 165, so it'd be about six feet tall for the antenna. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the antenna array.
And, Mr. Chair, we do also have a slide that if I...
Please, computer, please.
If you see on the right-hand side of the slide, the equipment in the circle at the top there, that's...
So there'll be 12 of those cylindrical or thin rectangular panels around in an array, and the total of the array is about six feet tall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gibbons, please.
When the county entertained this, did they do a study on how far this thing would radiate out to? I mean...
The area of coverage?
Yeah, the coverage area, and they did that?
Mr. Gibbons, that was submitted with the application. That was part of the material that was reviewed by the consultant. We didn't have the consultant come tonight. If it's, if you all have specific questions as far as the technical nature of this, we recommend that they come in and speak to you about it, because that's why we hired them, because they're the ones with the expertise.
Okay, that might be a do. All right. Okay, other questions for staff or for the applicant? Please, Mr. Cole.
I'm just curious with the advent of technology and things changing, and Mr. Gibbons touched too. Do we know how many cell towers in the county are defunct and not usable now? Do we, again, just curious about looking at the future. I mean, yes, this is for a 20-year time period, but what happens if technology changes and they want to do something different? What's, you know, some of the logistics of this, I think, are fair, and to the people, familiar with this area, having had a friend that lives in that area for many years, I think the people who live there would be curious about, okay, so this is up now, what will happen in five or 10 years if technology has changed and they want to make it slightly different, even if it is still within six feet? And so I'm just curious on that. I didn't really see a lot of that type of detail.
Mr. Chairman, can we defer this until after we hear the next one, and then put the joint comments together?
So hold off on action on this one until we talk through item number two?
Right.
How we do that, Ms. McLendon? If we're inclined?
Mr. Chairman, you can do that. It would be to table...
Table, just table it?
Table, well, not actually table it, it would be deferred to a time certain to bring it back up for tonight.
Means you just defer it to after item number two?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to do that, Mr. Chairman, if I could make that motion.
Ms. Bailey?
I'm sorry, so Ms. Bailey's just...
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, that would be fine.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Gibbons' motion.
No, I'll second Ms. Bailey's.
Okay. We're going to give you the motion, Ms. Bailey, to defer this to after item number two. Second to Mr. Gibbons for the comment. Hearing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Opposed? Okay, we're going to move on to item number two then, which is the Comprehensive Plan Compliance Review for Telecom Tower Verizon Wireless at Austin Ridge Water Tank.
Mike Zureff will be giving the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. So item two is also a Comprehensive Plan Compliance Review. This is for telecommunications tower for Verizon Wireless at the Austin Ridge Water Tank.
Okay.
The request is to determine compliance with the Comprehensive Plan to add telecommunications and telecommunication antennas on an existing water tank. The property itself is zoned PD2, Plan Development 2. The applicant is Verizon Wireless, care of Tim Dwyer with Network Building and Consulting. The location of this site is on parcel 29G-BB. It's on the south side of Shields Road and 300 feet west of Austin Ridge Drive. This would be also a proposed installation of 12-panel antennas. The existing water tower is 148 and a half feet tall. The, again, these antennas would be located on top of the water tower, which would increase the height with the antennas up to 152 feet. The equipment for the antennas would be within a 12-by-17-foot shelter, which is located inside the existing fenced compound at the base of this water tower. Site is on county-owned property. It is surrounded by undeveloped property currently. It's within the town center portion of the Embry Mill development, so this area does have future use potential of mix of commercial and multifamily residential development. Here's an aerial view of the tower site. The tower is, and the parcel is surrounded in red on the image on the left. You see the site, the town center area is primarily wooded at this point, but it will be planned for development in the future. And on the right is the image of the water tower. This, these two images on the left show the site layout plan, and on the right is an elevation of the tank on the site layout plan. So I can point out, the location of the antennas would be in these locations at the top of the tank. The outer perimeter of the tank is in this location. You have the fenced-in compound, and the equipment shelter that I've mentioned and referred to is in this corner of the fenced compound. And you can see on the elevations where the antennas would be located on top of the And with this application, the applicant also submitted a site coverage propagation map, and this map identifies the existing coverage. Blue represents the best level of coverage, and it goes down to green, then red, and white. The location of the proposed tower is in this location that I'm circling, and the next image identifies the expanded coverage after the installation of the antennas in that location.
Yes, Mr. Gibbons, please. Back a slide?
Yes.
When would you know it was too much?
Well, I guess if...
Is there anything you can mention right now?
Well, I think if, for example, if we had this propagation map and they are looking to, say, for example, put in a tower right here, near, you know, that would not be the right location, because you're in a location that already has adequate coverage, so...
What do you consider adequate coverage? That's all I'm...
Where are the areas that, according to this map, are shaded in blue, that are 85 and above? And as far as what too much coverage is, I guess I don't have an answer to that. Okay, again, also with this application, we had RCC consultants review the proposal. They reviewed the request for consistency with the telecommunications plan and its recommendations. They, we do find that, and they found that the request is consistent with many of the location recommendations in the telecommunications plan, in that they are co-locating on existing buildings or structures, locating on publicly-owned lands, and there's co-location on facilities, of facilities on water towers, which is a specific recommendation in our plan. They also, the consultant, did evaluate and confirm the propagation coverage maps that were provided. They have programs that they can run through and verify, and they did that. And then also did the same, the RF maximum permissible exposure analysis, and determined there would be no impact to public safety communication systems also. With this, staff does recommend that the request is substantially in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval.
Very good. Questions for staff? Yes, Mr. English?
Mike, in reference to those antennas, how many do we allow to go on those water towers? I know the one in Garrisonville is loaded full of antennas. Is there a maximum or minimum, the antennas can go on a water tower like that?
It may depend on the design. I'd have to look into that. I don't know if the applicant who is here may be aware, but it may depend on the design of the water tower, on how much can, how much load can the tower can bear.
Yeah, you know how many is on the one in Garrisonville? Do you?
I'm not familiar with that.
You're not sure?
These two sites are the first two sites that would have cell towers on them, other than for our public safety and our utilities communications.
So the ones in Garrisonville don't have cell towers on them?
Right.
They're just for fire rescue and police?
And utilities, right.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think Single's brought up a good point. When the application comes in from engineering, who signs off on it? The Utilities Department, is that...
Mr. Zureff? As far as engineering integrity for the load on the towers? Okay?
I'd have to defer to Utilities as well on that.
Okay.
Well, that's 04, but that's all, I'm not doing that.
Other questions for staff? Before we go to applicant?
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Tim Dwyer from Network Building and Consulting, 6095 Marshale Drive in Elkridge, Maryland. We're agent for Verizon Wireless. I'll try to answer some of your questions that you just brought up. In terms of loading, we obviously run a structural analysis on the tower that's submitted to the county during the building permit process, so obviously, that is done by a civil and structural engineer and certified, and the county reviews it through your engineers. So that's how that's done. In terms of this water tank, this water tank is newer. It's actually designed for co-location. On the top of the water tank, where Verizon Wireless is co-locating, there is a rail that is made for installing antennas, and there's... And there's also a rail below the bubble of the water tank that's also made for installing antennas. And the coax cables go inside the tower on this site, as opposed to some of the towers you may have seen, the water towers where they go up on the side. This is a newer one, so it was designed to have the coax cables go in the tower to be out of view. So, that, hopefully that helps answer a few of your loading.
Very good. Yeah, Mr. English?
If you put your Verizon antenna up there, and then you've got AT&amp;T, is it going to be the one here at Jason Lane? Can they intermingle? Can they, you've got to have, Verizon's got to have one theirs and then AT&amp;T's got to have one on their tower, so it doesn't work like that, correct?
From a radio frequency, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on radio frequency waves, but Verizon, AT&amp;T, and all these other carriers operate on different frequencies. So, in essence, they don't interfere with each other. That being said, the way where the antennas point is important for the radio frequency engineers to get the coverage. So, as you saw on the propagation maps, where they were shooting out was a lack of coverage. So, if AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or someone else needed to point that way, they may have to go on the rail below where we're going.
So, you could ultimately have two antennas on both?
You could.
Water towers?
Yeah.
Which you see on radio towers?
You see on...
Yeah, okay. If I could, the antennas, each of the 12, how tall are they? Are they about six feet tall, like?
Yes.
The reason it's only raising the total elevation three and a half feet is because it's somewhat around the arc of the...
Exactly. I believe the rad center is around 150 feet, so...
The way the array is designed.
Exactly, yeah. And I have to double check on the antennas. A lot of times through the process, the RF engineer will change the antenna design based on the needs, but in this case, the last I spoke, that's the size of the antennas.
Okay, thanks. I assumed they were generally standard in size, that's why I was wondering. Very good. Other questions for the applicant?
I had the same question about the 30 days a year when it's done.
Oh, do you know if the, do you happen to know if the provisions of your lease have a removal once it's no longer needed?
I'm fairly sure that they do have the 90-day provision in the lease that they will remove if they're not in use, the cessation of use. And we'll also put that on our building permit application and the drawings.
Okay.
That's one of the stipulations.
They've committed to that. Okay, got it. Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. If there's, now we'll open up the public comment. Any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, you may come forward and do so at this time. And when you do, state your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes, three minutes. When the green light comes on, one minute when the yellow light comes on, and when the red light comes on and begins blinking, we would ask that you conclude your comments.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Sulis at Seven Winding Creek Road, and I did want to try to speak to some of the specific issues that were brought up. We know that waves such as microwaving your food renders it really nutritionally null and void. There are questions about what all of this radio frequency will do to water and towers conceivably and theoretically corresponding with what we know. The opportunity for bacteria and fungi to grow in any substance are enhanced with exposure to radio frequency. Therefore, theoretically, you would have to put more things like chlorine and other things to kill those in your water, thereby lessening the quality of your water and making it less healthy. Also, I come from a telecom background, and, you know, we all loved the, and love, the economics of erecting a tower because you can put theoretically an infinite number of things on that tower. What we know right now is going on, however, is that in addition to aiding someone listening to, you know, getting more clarity from a call or something like that, or wifi or whatever, there are, you know, additional listening devices and viewing devices that can be put so that really towers can become very intrusive and enter into even more, you know, intrusion into people's privacy, if you will. So, you need to think about that in your environment. And to answer Mr. Cohen's question, sort of, about what happens in the future, because I noticed that these are slated to be 20-year agreements per, well, in my humble opinion, and I do research health issues, and as I said, I have a background in telecom, although I'm here as a citizen. What you have now, like, as I said, in England Run, is your average person in your average house has over 400 different antenna, which have overlapping circles around him, thereby exposing somebody in a house, not only to all that RF, but his microwave, his own electrical circuits, his own two telephones, you know, a pregnant woman, and she's got her little laptop on her tummy there, and, you know, it's a lot of exposures. So, whereas a tower may say, oh, yeah, we're good, we're good with the numbers, we're within the maximum, it's not about what gets emitted, it's about the actual exposure all of us have in our respective houses. And unless we own the top of a mountain somewhere with no cell towers on it, I think we're all exposed way too much. What needs to happen down the road is, first of all, all of these towers need to be erected, not for monetary profit on anyone's part, but for the good, the health of the citizens in the community. What can happen, Mr. Cohen, down the road is, instead of 400 overlapping circles...
Ma'am, if you could wrap up your comments.
You can have two. In other words, have fewer towers, but more of them. And that would be a happy solution for all of us, and I think effective.
Ma'am?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Yes, sir, please.
During chairman, members of the commission. My name is Philip Horner, and I live at 1012 England Drive, and I've enjoyed the discussion here, and I have a selfish interest in this. I live in Quay Harbor, 1012 England Drive, have Verizon. And in our particular part of the neighborhood, we have sometimes almost non-existent cell service. It's not unusual for us to take a cellphone on the second floor of the house and try to make a call or text out something or an attachment and get no service and have to put it up in the window of the house. And maybe it may take five, 10 minutes, two hours before the transmission occurs. It's a dead spot. And I have a question for Mike and the technician. The coverage area that's being increased, will it go as far as 1012 England Drive or not? So, and that's all. I just, and if not, I'd like to talk to somebody because generally in our neighborhood, it is horrible. And if we could do something, very much appreciate it, and excuse my selfish interest in this, but thank you so very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and bring this one back in. Are there any other questions, follow-up points for the, if the applicant would like to speak to any items that were raised as questions? Please rebuttal opportunity.
Speaking to the gentleman that just came up about his cell service. I don't know where your house is in comparison to this site in terms of mileage, but usually a cell site like this that has the larger antennas can push through three, four miles, if not more. And basically Verizon, what they try to do is fill gaps in coverage, and that's what they're trying to do. So, if they haven't hit you yet, what I would ask you to do is go online, and there's a complaint form, and if the more people that you have complain, the more likely Verizon is to come fill those gaps in your area, too. So, I would hope this does help you in that respect, so.
Right, thank you. Any questions for staff or applicants?
Just a...
Mr. Cohen, please.
Quick question for Mike. I sent an email, and I saw, and I forget, quite honestly, I was skimming through to see whether it was item one or two, but it mentioned something about taxes, and you were kind enough to get back to me about taxes, but I wasn't really quite sure. I think the language that was in either one or two, something said something to the effect that they would be paying the applicable taxes, and then I was just curious, you know, what are we talking about? And so, I'll say, what are we talking about?
That was item one, and Erica can speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cohen, the taxes that are referenced in the lease agreement with the AT&amp;T mobility facility, they relate to any additional assessed value that results from the telecommunications equipment that's located on the water tower that the property owner, the landlord, will not be responsible for that assessed value, that increase in taxes, and that when the landlord receives that assessed value and the corresponding taxes, they will be forwarded to the tenant.
Okay, so since we're the owner of the water tower, so theoretically, the county will get the bill, and then the county will send it to the telephone company. And again, so what are we talking about? And if you don't know, then that's fine, but I just, to me, if we're getting, you know, said this is going to be quote-unquote revenue generating, it'd be nice to know what type of revenue we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cohen, certainly staff could research an average of, you know, taxes that have been assessed on such facilities and give you an idea.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
What I'm concerned about is the application in general, that when it comes in, there's no engineering report. There's no area that says where we're going to get into a danger of maybe over, and I think that should come with the application. If you get too much up on it, and I don't know what the integrity of every tower is, but somebody should certify that, and I think that belongs in utilities when they bring it forward.
Mr. Zureff, or, well, if anyone's staff, so it was indicated that they do submit their structural analysis, and then we, somebody on county staff reviews it to ensure we're confident with it. Do you know how the process works, or can we find that out?
They would have to go through getting building permit approval for...
And then the building permit approval, that's where they would confirm this?
The engineering reports that are submitted.
That's after the fact, isn't it?
Right. After.
I'm trying to be proactive when it comes in.
Right.
But I'll get a comment to you.
Okay. So, I do note, just as a general background, that what we are doing here is what we have asked to be done as part of telecommunications plan and our comprehensive plan. We've, in the county, we've asked for greater coverage. What we've asked for greater coverage where needed in a very, in the least intrusive, most deliberately planned, least impactful, least number of additional radio tower methods. So, we came up with a concept to try and find these co-located opportunities, and that's what the county's now driving to try and pursue. And so, these are all working to comply with our own structure and our rule set. That said, these are our first couple, and so I know everybody's trying to make sure we understand the dynamics and implications. So, what I've heard here, and this one being in my district, I'm inclined to try and just understand a little bit more, just so I know I have it in my head. I do understand it's part of our comp plan strategy. I do know it's part of our telecoms strategy, but I would just like to look for a few more things. So, what I did hear, I think, tonight, and what I noted for myself would be to ask staff if we could come back next time. I did see the note, just curiosity, what the tax implication would be, that it actually raises a little bit there, but, and understanding maybe from the consultant, just so we understand what the RF safety maximum permissible emissions schedule is about, what that represents, just so we understand that a little bit. I did hear a question about just the range of the emissions, just so we understand that a little bit better in this process. Certainly, we've got, we at least now know where the structural analysis plays. It's at the building permit, at least there is a validation part there, though certainly we could work to refine that a little bit. And then I'm sure that if we had the consultant here, there'd probably be one or two more questions that would evolve, just so that we can better understand this. Were there other thing, particular questions, just that we could advance to staff now?
Well, we've gone way out of the way to make sure that our towers are aesthetically fitting with the community, and when you start adding stuff onto it, does it take away?
Though, we've built them, actually designed to add these on them.
No, I mean, we built them to blend in with the neighborhood. It's a certain blue paint. Then we had to put Stafford on it because we're so proud of Stafford, you're going to have it in the rural area. But I'm saying, we went out of our way to make sure that we use the right blue so it could blend in with the sky. And if you look around, communities, we do have good towers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Just, again, I'm not really a great one on science, but I'm curious about the mechanics of, and the rationale for why putting it inside the tank versus on the outside. I'm sure there's some cost involved, but, and then if there's any impact to the water or to whatnot with the vibrations, with the, you know, and I'm not going to even try to remember the letters that were said, and then the whole health issue. And I just don't know enough to actually say, yes, I think this is great, put more on. I know that was the concept, but there's a difference between putting one on where there's no growth, or one where there's, we're out in White Oak, where there's nothing around it, but maybe a 7-Eleven, versus putting one in the middle of, right in the middle of a subdivision. I just, I would feel comfortable understanding more.
Okay, we can ask staff to take work to address that. Any other points? With that, this one, actually, is in the Garrisonville district, so I'd entertain a motion if somebody make it on my behalf to defer this to the 22 April session and give staff an opportunity to respond to the questions that were presented.
Second.
I need the motion. Motion by Mr. English, second by Mr. Gibbons. Any further comment by anyone involved? Yeah, please, Mr. Zureff. We'll just jump that in the middle of the motion. It works now.
Just to confirm, so you are wanting us to see if the consultant can be available?
Yes, please, I'm sorry. So, we're deferring to 22 April, but obviously, for some reason, the consultant's not available, we would just defer a little longer. Again, these first couple, I think the thought is just to understand this better. We just not approached these before. Thank you very much, but thanks for clarifying that. Okay, any other further comment? All's in favor of the motion, defer this to 22nd? Yep, well, I'm pleased.
I'm sorry, we're just looking at the next schedule.
They all stink.
With the public hearings. If you'll, that's fine, if you want to do that and have our consultant come, we are paying them by the hour, but the applicant will be paying them. But if you, if you wish to wait until the May meeting, it could be less, but we'll leave that up to you. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I thought we had...
Seven public hearings.
I thought we had a lot of public hearings, every one of them, for the next four.
We haven't confirmed the ones after that, but we do have seven going.
Don't we have five April 22nd?
Well, there are two, two pieces that go...
Okay, two parts.
Two parts.
But the May 13th, aren't there another, like, six?
We haven't confirmed what is, what is actually going on the 13th. It may be, but we haven't set that agenda yet.
Yeah, by the time we get there, it's going to be horrible, too.
It could be, that's...
Yeah.
If you want to go ahead and do it next time, that's fine.
We're just going to try it next time. I think they all going to stink.
We'll check their availability.
And certainly, if they're not available, we'll have to defer anyways. Okay. All's in favor of the motion, deferred to 22nd to get some additional information, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unopposed? Very good. We're going to defer that to 22nd of April, and we are now back to item number one, which is in the Aquia Election District. Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Chair, I too believe that we should defer this to the next meeting on April 22nd, understanding that we are trying to be in compliance with the comp plan, but I think there were enough questions and issues raised tonight that it would benefit all of us to make sure that we're headed in the right direction and that we answer the questions that were set forth. And those two would be understanding the tax and how that will work out, having the consultant come in, the range of the emissions, and any, any answers to any potential health issues would be good to have a better understanding of that. So, I'm going to, to move defer this to April 22nd?
Motion to defer 22nd April, Ms. Bailey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gibbons. Further comment, Ms. Bailey?
No further comment.
Mr. Gibbons? Any other member? All's in favor of the motion deferred 22nd of April, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will take this back up on 22nd of April. Thank everybody for coming out for your comments. And with that, we're going to move on to item number three, RC 15150576, the reclassification of Stafford 95 Business Center, the proffer amendment. Ms. Baker, or, no, it's yours. Okay, very good. Ms. Baker?
Good evening, Kathy Baker, Department of Planning and Doning. This item is a proffer amendment for Stafford 95 Business Center. This request is to remove proffers on property zoned M1 Light Industrial. It's located... It's located on six parcels totaling 177 acres, and the Stafford County Board of Supervisors is the applicant for this project. There are two property owners involved. One property owner owns one parcel, and one property owner owns five of the parcels. As you can see, the location of the property, to the west of I-95, south of Rameth Church Road, and it straddles, the parcel straddles Centerport Parkway. The zoning of the parcels are M1, the adjacent parcels are M1 as well as A1 Agricultural. There is also some M2 zoning in the vicinity of the parcels to the north. This is an aerial view of the properties. Again, the two parcels that are to the left side of your screen are the larger parcels, which are straddle Centerport Parkway, and the one to the south, as you see, buffers, butts up against I-95. The parcels to the top of the screen, to the top right, you have the parcel G and H, and then, I'm going to show you in this location. It's a little bit hard to see, but this, this parcel is basically just right-of-way area, and then you have the additional parcel that, it's a little cut off on the screen, but fronts on Rameth Church Road and Centerport Parkway.
The, I apologize, I meant to drive this this weekend, I didn't. On the parcel 383 scribble something E, up there on the top.
Correct.
Is anybody, what is that there?
It is just right-of-way.
Okay. Yeah, what the building is.
Sorry, I have a little trouble here. Let's go back to this.
And I'm just trying to mentally drive down that road, remember what that is.
See if I can get rid of that. And I'll show you a slide in a minute that zooms in on this area where they're looking to do improvements to Centerport Parkway, so you can see a little bit, the road a little bit better in that slide. But 38E gives, provides access off of Centerport Parkway to several lots, and then the other piece of it is portion of right-of-way with the current location, the current alignment of Centerport Parkway. 34D, again, is that corner parcel on Rameth Church.
Thank you.
So these parcels were zoned M1 in 1989, and it was an overall rezoning of the Centerport development. The proffers were amended in 1992, and there are different proffers that are associated with different parcels, but these six parcels do have the same specific proffers. Some of the proffers have been satisfied already, and I'll go into them in detail in a moment. Some are now regulated by county code that may not have been in place at the time of the zoning. So the owners of the property do wish to remove these proffers, they're finding that prospective buyers are confused by the complexity of the proffers, again, which some of them no longer apply or have been satisfied. So the Board of Supervisors did authorize the county to pursue this application and to act as the development in order to facilitate economic development around the airport. So some of the existing proffers I'm going to be going over with regard to transportation, the proffers did specify right turn and left turn lanes on Rameth Church Road at the Centerport Parkway intersection. Will note that these, this project is actually included in VDOT's six-year program, and secondary six-year program, and the right turn into the Centerport Parkway and the realignment are actually to be constructed and completed by the end of this year. The left right turn lane at Rameth Church Road and Route 1 is included in a long-term VDOT project, as a VDOT project. This has not been slated for development yet because the improvement has not been warranted. I will note that regardless of the development of this property, the right turn and the realignment of Centerport Parkway are actually necessitated now because the, that small portion of Centerport Parkway can't be taken into the state's system until the alignment does meet current VDOT standards, so that's why that is moving forward. Note, one of the proffers dealt with the I-95 interchange construction as well as Centerport Parkway, and we all know that that is now the exit 136 off of I-95, and Centerport Parkway has been completed. So this just shows the intersection improvements, just a schematic showing your Rameth Church Road and Centerport Parkway. See, this is the current alignment of Centerport Parkway, and to the left of that is how it's going to be realigned to come in perpendicular to that. The area that you had questioned, the parcel, you can vaguely see the outline, but...
Oh, okay.
It encompasses this and this, so that, that's that parcel E, is basically right-of-way.
Thank you.
With regard to the environmental proffers, they do specify that any development complies with applicable codes for stormwater management, wetlands, erosion, and non-point source pollution. And will note that there are code requirements that do dictate those, the implementation of those features. The, one of the proffers discussed reservation of open space, and we do have code requirements in place that in the M1 zone, you have a minimum open space requirement, as well as maximum floor area ratios for each parcel. This just shows the resource protection area that does encumber the two properties to the very west. See here, the, here's the property line, and the blue hatched area is resource protection that runs along both of the western edges of that property. So those areas would remain undisturbed in accordance with our Chesapeake Bay regulations. One of the primary proffers was dedicating 60 acres for construction of the airport, and as we all know, that has also been completed. That was about a page and a half worth of proffers, that was very specific, and what was going to happen to the property if the airport wasn't developed, so no longer a need for that proffer. There are several proffers related to landscaping and buffering. I'll note, many of them were not specific, but they were recommendations on general landscaping and buffering, and in, I want to say 1995, we did include in our ordinance new landscaping and buffering requirements. So the majority of the landscape buffer, either we have codes that are similar, or even in some cases exceed what's required. There was a proffer providing a streetscape plan for the review by the staff and planning commission, not, not approval, but just for review. So that's now covered in landscaping. Not that the planning commission has input on that as far as, could certainly review that during our, when site plans are submitted for the properties. There was a proffer encouraging tree preservation. Again, we don't, this is one of the ones, we don't have a current code requirement, but we'll note that there would be preservation of trees in your RPA areas, and also when landscape plans are submitted to the county as part of site development plans, can note that existing vegetation can be credited towards your landscaping requirements. There's a proffer about providing parking lot landscaping on sites, and we do have landscaping requirements in the code now that require parking lot landscaping, both interior and along the exterior, the perimeter of parking spaces, when you have more than 24 spaces. And then, lastly, our architectural design proffers, which are discussed, and it was anticipated that design guidelines would be established, as well as a Centerport Architectural Review Board. And I'll note that the Architectural Review Board has been established, but the follow-up guidelines have not been put into place. And with this particular property, the guidelines would be in place by the time that site plans are submitted, but this proffer then would go away for these six particular properties. The, the architectural guidelines specify that buildings within 500 feet of I-95 be constructed of masonry, and that's one of the other code requirements that we don't have anything in place right now that would require that for these particular properties. Again, it notes, the proffers note, parking lot, loading platform, trash receptacles, and outside storage would be cited to minimize visual impact from your primary roadways. And I'll note that the parking lots, as we said, do require landscaping, and these other items actually are required to be screened now under our county codes. Part of the, the design proffers also talk about signage being limited in number, height, and size, and also be coordinated in color, form, and proportion. I'll note, the code does regulate the number and the height and the size of signs, we don't specifically have anything that would be addressed for coordination of the color or the form in this area, but the size, the size itself would be regulated. Additionally, there's a 75 building, 75-foot building setback from I-95. Our current code requires a 40-foot setback, but we also have a minimum 60-foot buffer area between I-95 and any development. In addition to that, we'll note that the fire marshal typically requires a fire access around a building, so you're probably looking at an additional 20-foot setback, 18 to 20-foot setback, so you're getting close to that 75-foot building setback from I-95. Along Centerport Parkway, the existing proffer is for a 50-foot building setback, our code does require a 40-foot setback, so not quite meeting that 50-foot. Lastly, the existing proffers deal with lighting, being shielded and directed to avoid glare on adjacent properties as well as the roadways, and we do have code requirements in place now that, that do deal with lighting. Also, maintenance, repair, and replacement of landscaping, fencing, and walls, that is required pursuant to our landscaping design manual. When there's fencing and walls that are either required or a part of your landscaping, then we do have maintenance requirements for those. The, and then the last one is about the loading platforms not being located within 500 feet of I-95 unless they're screened, and as I noted previously, this is now required to be screened under our county code. So you see, the majority of these proffers do have regulations now in place under our existing codes. There are a few with relate, as they relate to the, the building, construction, and design that are really the ones that are outstanding. Under the comprehensive plan, this area is zone, designated on our land use plan as business and industry. There is that area of resource protection, which you see in the darker blue. And staff does note that the, this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, with the land use, under the land use recommendations, and consistent with the proposed development pattern, since the M1 zoning is staying the same, the majority of development in this area is industrial in nature with some commercial development. And we haven't found any apparent negative impacts. So we are recommending approval. The, I'll note that the airport authority submitted a letter in support of the proffer amendment. They did request that a sanitary sewer easement be provided across that parcel that is to the south side of the airport boundary, and they have submitted a letter indicating that they will provide that easement. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Gibbons?
And the last one is request sanitary easement, is that the airport asking that?
Yes, the airport authority. There's a letter in your packet that has the request from the airport authority.
So it's all or nothing on the proffers?
That's the proposal that the, that the board sent.
Other questions for staff? And the applicant is us?
We are the applicant.
Would you like to cover the applicant side of this? No.
I do have the owner present, agent representing the owner is here if there are specific questions.
Specific questions for...
The parcels.
Representative of the owner? That was just too good a presentation. Very good. Okay, I'll now open it to public comment portion of the public hearing. If there's any member of the public ahead would like to speak on this item, you may come forward and do so at this time. When you do, we just ask that you state your name and address. Once you do, a green light will come on indicating three minutes available, yellow light will come on when a minute remains, and then a red light will start flashing, we would ask that you conclude your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Elaine Counter, 622 Lancaster Street. One thing I was wondering, does it make sense to approve the airport land use compatibility guidelines before voting on something like this? I'm not sure. I also am a firm supporter of architectural design requirements, and I'm not sure if something might be slipping through the cracks on this change, so I hope you'll take a good, close look at it, even if it's an industrial area, it's good to have it looking nice for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Charlie O'Donovan, I'm a representative of the owner at 17 We ended up unfortunately foreclosing on this property about a year and a half ago, and it was because the property never ever got a market to support it, and the economic basis for its viability was undermined by the recession. So one of the things that happened when it came to me was that I had to reposition it and figure out what was wrong with the property. We have almost all of it sold or under contract. Every single contract is contingent upon the removal of the proffers. One of the contracts is with a Fortune 100 company that's already in the county that wants to expand. They won't do it if we don't get the proffers removed, because there are other pieces that are so nebulous and so unstructured that it leaves them exposed for an undetermined period of time, and they are afraid to make the investment because they could get a gotcha 20 years after they've been in the building. And nobody wants to make a business decision with that kind of uncertainty and with that much money at risk. These are real deals if the proffers are not there. We're not obfuscating the rules, right to the Stafford County system, which is quantified, predictable, and well-defined, and governed by you. One of the biggest issues is that there's a review board that is made up of independent people, and there are no standards, so you don't know what you're trying to design to. And you could go back and forth, back and forth, spending lots of money on design work that never, ever gets fulfilled. And frankly, there's no enforcement for that board, so it's really, it's a wasted exercise. And frankly, these people, when they can choose other locations within the region to locate, would go to the path of least resistance, and that's pretty much all I needed to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other member of the public? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and bring it back into the planning commission.
Sir, I have a question.
Please, Mr. Gibbons.
The applicant, the applicant complying with the one, item number four? So in other words, when you take all these proffers out, do you still meet the airport requirement?
Basically, the airport requirement was giving the land for the airport to be constructed on this.
I can't hear.
Yeah, Mr. Gibbons, just to clarify, are you, are you asking the question that, should the airport land use compatibility guidelines be approved and incorporated in the comp plan, would this comply with that?
Oh, sorry, misunderstood.
No, thank you. Is there anything about the proposed airport land use compatibility guidelines as they currently stand that would necessarily be in conflict with what is being undertaken here?
Each parcel would still have to come in with a site development plan, so it would be...
And it'll have to comply with whatever's in place at the time? Okay. Okay, very good. Any other questions for staff? Or staff slash applicant? Okay, what's the thoughts or will of the commissioners?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve RC 15150576.
So there's a motion recommending approval of the reclassification of Stafford 95 Business Center proffer amendments as cited and a seconded by Mr. Boswell. Further comment, Mr. English?
No, sir.
Mr. Boswell? Any other member? Okay. All those in favor of the motion recommending approval of the reclassification of Stafford 95 Business Center proffer amendment, RC 15150576, signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? None opposed, passes 6-0. We'll now move on to item number four, which is the amendment to the Stafford County comp plan as deals with the airport land use compatibility guidelines. Ms. Baker, or Mr., run, 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 Mr. Zraf, please. Ms. Baker's going to hand it over to you, so.
We'll be switching over presentations here.
Thank you.
Okay, while Ms. Baker's doing that, this item is a presentation of the draft airport land use compatibility plan that was developed by a subcommittee of the Planning Commission and Stafford Regional Airport Authority. This subcommittee included Stephen Appicella, Lyndy Kirkland, Darrell English, and Hamilton The issue is to consider airport compatible land use guidelines around the Stafford Regional Airport as an element of the Stafford County Comprehensive Plan. The document would be identified as Section 3.8 of the Land Use Plan Chapter within the Comprehensive Plan 2010 to 2030 document, on the issue of application of the guidelines. As part of the Comprehensive Plan, the guidelines, they would serve as guidelines when considering rezoning and condition use permit applications. They would assist all parties, including elected officials, staff, landowners, and developers, when considering specific development proposals. The guidelines would not impact current zoning rights, and they also complement and help inform the existing zoning requirements, such as the airport overlay district that is in place. Looking at the timeline and how we got here, back pretty much a year ago, last April, there was an initial meeting between the Planning Commission and Regional Airport Authority to discuss a concern with conflicting land uses, and the subcommittee was formed to work on these guidelines. From June to October, subcommittee met six times to work on the guidelines. In November, they had a product that they unveiled to the public at an open house, and where the public had an opportunity to provide comments. And on December 18th, the subcommittee finalized the draft document incorporating comments received from the public. Staff would note that, and then from there, on January and February of this year, this plan was presented to the Planning Commission and Board, and scheduled now for this hearing. The joint, staff would note that the joint committee process was open and transparent. Public was invited to all meetings, was allowed to offer their thoughts and comments during each session as well. This plan includes several sections, an introduction, background, the areas of impact, a zoning and land use analysis, kind of a statement of need, so to speak, and then the land use compatibility guidelines themselves. Looking at the introduction section, this looks at the basis for the request. There are current policies in our Comprehensive Plan that recommend that these types of guidelines be developed, since the county should develop land use compatibility standards for new development to conform to within the aircraft approach patterns of airports and landing strips. And another basis, it has been determined that, you know, there is a high level of growth potential in and around the regional airport. We have three urban development areas that are in close proximity to the airport, and other business and industry area, land that has yet to develop, but development is moving in this direction. And staff would note it's good planning practice to establish guidelines to help minimize impacts between conflicting uses. Looking at the background of the airport, this section touches on the history of the airport, some of the existing conditions, the levels of operations at the airport. Future plans are touched on. This image identifies one of the sections of the airport's master plan. It identifies future planned improvements at the airport. This includes, shaded in green, a near-term expansion of the runway of 1,000 feet, and other improvements are planned, too, with additional airport hangar space and other facilities. Also, the economic impact of the airport that it has on the county and region is mentioned as well. Looking at the area of impact, this defines the airport impact zones that would be subject to the guidelines. This image identifies and depicts the airport impact zones. These closely correspond to the airport impact overlay zoning district. In developing these zones, the subcommittee started with the subareas of the current zoning overlay that's in place, and during the process, the subareas were further divided into other smaller segments due to the proximity of the airport, different aircraft maneuvers, and different degrees of noise or safety concerns that might be experienced. Just zooming in on that same map, this area, of course, corresponds with the airplane traffic patterns. The different traffic patterns have different levels of impact. Some of these areas include the approaches. Those are the blue-shaded areas located at the end of each side of the runway. You have AP1, the closest area of impact, greatest level of impact two, and then you go out to AP2, and AP3 is farther away. A transitional zone along each side of the runway. You have horizontal zones. There are three subareas that were created. These are generally the circling patterns. If a plane needs to circle around the airport, they would be moving through these horizontal zones. And then the conical zone is an outer buffer area that's in purple. Those are the main subareas. And we went through a zoning and land use analysis, which this section looked at and determined the types of potential development that might occur by comparing the existing zoning districts to the future land use potential in each airport zone. We evaluated that, looked at the amount of area that might be impacted. For example, this is looking at the H1 zone. But first of all, several of the areas show that the future land use would be consistent with current zoning, but the analysis does identify some zones that might be impacted more so, specifically this H1 zone. The tables identify that currently, majority of the area is zoned A1, that's agricultural, the base zoning, yet looking at future land use, the planned areas identify a much greater level of urban development area, suburban and business and industry, so that identifies a potential for more development in this area. Then, this leads then into the land use compatibility guidelines. And the guidelines, in preparing these, staff researched a multitude of existing nationwide land use compatibility documents. A lot of information was taken from the Airport Cooperative Research Program Report. It's a three-volume report sponsored by the FAA, completed in 2010 by the Transportation Research Board of the National Academies in Washington, DC. It presents a comprehensive account of issues associated with land use around airports and provides guidance that we utilized in developing this. We also, in our research, looked at source documents from other states, Washington State, Florida, California, Iowa, other localities in other states, and the guidelines that they have around airports and other locations. And there were general themes with all these other source documents that we utilized and tailored it to fit the needs in Stafford. The policies were developed from a consensus of the research, result of the dialogue by the committee members, and comments received from the public. The land use compatibility matrix that is within the guidelines, that's kind of one of the main sections of this plan, and it is proposed as a tool to kind of help identify compatibility between particular use and the functional activities related to the airport. Uses may be compatible or have incompatible elements with an airport when located in a specific zone. The level of incompatibility is related primarily to safety, but also to the viability of both the airport and the surrounding development. The matrix lists categories of uses, identifies the level of compatibility within the table as either compatible, needing additional review, or not compatible. It's also noted that the proposed policy 1.9 states that even when a specific project is identified as not compatible, they might be, they may be appropriate if it can be demonstrated that they would not negatively impact the airport operations or safety of the general public. So this image shows a portion of Table 1. It identifies the specific compatibility zones across the top in the different colors. And then, and then along, the categories of different uses are located along the left side. And we have, the uses are generalized, the different examples that we looked at, some places have had it very detailed. All the uses were very broken out into many different categories. We kept it somewhat general, and that's what you see in this table. And so, for example, the assembly use that you see, it would be compatible in the APT and C conical zones. It would require additional review in the AP3, H1, and H2 zones, and would not be compatible in the AP1, AP2, T, and H3 zones. So if something was identified as needing additional review, the additional review includes, it's the next section, it's Table 2 of the document, it includes standards that are intended to address possible areas of incompatibility between categories of uses in a particular zone where sites are proposed. There are multiple criteria which are considered, including externalities such as smoke, steam, wildlife attractants, reflective, building materials, minimum of one-half acre of continuous open space on certain sites, and minimum setbacks distance of 3,000 feet for residential development. Also, certain development might require a disclosure notice, which we've included as part of the plan as well in the appendix. Applications for zoning reclassification are often submitted in order to develop residential subdivisions consisting of smaller lots, and these sometimes result in an increase in density. So this is kind of an example of how that might apply against the plan. When you look at the issue of small lot, single-family uses or townhomes, this use would be compatible in the APT and C zones, but then might require additional review in H1, H2, and AP3, and then not compatible in some of the other zones. And the next slide identifies, in green, you see the zones, the conical and APT, where the residential use would be considered compatible outright. Then this section in yellow identifies zones where small lot residential would be, may need additional review, and then this identifies the zones that would not be considered compatible for that specific type of use. And I also want to point out something that was mentioned to me, that while I'm on this slide, you can see the AP3, the light blue zone, that covers a very large area. It goes all the way to the east, down to King George, and the degree of compatibility would be variable in that type of zone. For example, if there's a proposed church that's located down by the King George County line, where aircraft are flying at a much higher altitude, it would be less of an issue or concern as it relates to the proximity of the runway perspective. So there'd be a little less concern when you go much farther away from the runway in this case. Here's just a screenshot of the additional review standards that would apply for a single-family residential lots, single-family small residential lots. We have different standards that would apply in the approach AP3 zone than would be in place for the H1 and H2 zone, so it does break it out somewhat in that regard. And then, the plan also provides recommended population thresholds that would apply across an entire site, and then in smaller areas on a site, the single acre intensity. And this would be measured by determining the approximate number of people based on various uses in these different subareas, to see if concentrations would be too excessive or not. Regarding the evaluation of this proposal as it relates to other Comprehensive Plan documents, it does provide an additional layer of guidance. Development should conform to both the main land use plan recommendations and the airport guidelines, and this is not intended to replace the underlying land use plan. The compatibility matrix applies to all types of land uses regardless of the underlying land use recommendations. So if a land use plan, if the land use plan does not support more than, for example, if it doesn't support more than rural residential, but the airport plan says that apartments might be compatible, it does not mean that, well, the airport plan says we can do apartments, so I can do apartments, but they're really in a rural land use area. So it's, you really have to look at both documents and apply both. And in summary, staff does recommend...
Back to slide?
Back up that one.
Yes.
Issue pointed out there...
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. Moving along. There was a concern raised that in the Tables 1 and 2, there's a land use category that says single-family, rural, 1 to 3 plus acres. There was a concern that it's not clear if that's referring to lot size or density. So that's something that staff would say if there is a desire to provide some specificity as to the intent, then staff would want to look at that and look at what the impacts of that would be, whether we're talking about lot sizes, or if we're applying that to an overall density across a site.
Okay.
So leave that for your consideration. And staff does recommend approval of the compatible land use guidelines for the following reasons that we've discussed during this presentation. And I won't go through all of the points, but we'll turn it over now for any questions that the planning commission...
Questions for staff? Mr. Gibbons?
Going back to that slide, the former supervisor did raise that there's a concern, not a concern, but just as if you could get some clarity.
Some clarity. So that's a possibility for a little bit of language. I did notice staff also mentioned that, I assume we could address the AP3 and the gradation of concern out towards King George versus in closer runway, maybe affiliated with heights or something of the flight path. I don't know, but probably with a sentence or two, we could add that clarity of intent as well. Okay. Other questions for staff? Mr. English?
The non-compatible, just want to clear that, I mean, that's not shutting the door on anybody that lives in the H3 zone. Correct, Mike?
Right, as we mentioned there, you know, if it can be proven that the use is not going to be negatively impacted, then...
So nobody's going to be, I mean, they've got that chance to bring it.
Yeah, I mean, this is all God, and so it doesn't keep somebody from...
Right. Okay, just wanted to... And also, on buy right, do you know how many buy rights are in that area? Is it 15,000?
Approximately 15,000 across the entire area underneath the overall impact zone.
Okay.
And that would, that's actually existing and buy right, so all the existing homes and then all the full, if every property developed out to its full zoning potential.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Or we go to public comment? Okay, very good. Thank you. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, you may come forward and do so at this time. Again, we just ask that you state your name and your address. A green light will come on indicating three minutes, yellow light when there's one minute, and then a red light would ask you to conclude your comments.
Good evening. I'm Joe McMath, 11-8 Swick Road in the Rock Hill District. And I would just like to ask if it's appropriate for me just to pose a couple of questions to the staff. And... to the staff, in lieu of you're doing it.
You can certainly state them, and then-
All right. Well, one of them is, a question is, how do you determine the acreage numbers for the future land use acreages for the various zones? How did you derive those numbers? And secondly, in looking at this, in looking at the various zone pictures and maps and so forth, I was trying to get a sense of how that might overlap with the proposed GW Village development. And I had a kind of a hard time doing that, comparing maps from one to this. And I was wondering, would it be possible to generate a picture or a slide or something that would show that overlap of the GW Village development proposal with the compatibility zones that are shown here in this, this report?
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do know they've had the, in the GW discussion, we've had the overlay map presented there, so it's already been produced, so it's easy to-
But I don't think, Mr. Chairman, we requested that last time, to take what they proposed, and then they changed the density from, to overlay it.
Yeah, overlay it on the new proposal.
Yeah.
Right, right, yep. So we, I mean, that can certainly be done, because we've done that. Yeah, I agree with you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. First, I'd like to thank Phil Horning for bringing to our attention several months ago that we should have had an airport compatibility plan. And it looks like there's been a lot of good work done on this. Unfortunately, I did not attend any of the meetings regarding this, and I think this is my first cursory examination of, of the plan. I'm hoping that there was public involvement. You said the public was invited. How many members of the public actually came to meetings? How many actually submitted comments? I know how important it is that you have this in place before you vote on something as large as the George Washington Village project. So I, I don't think you want to delay too much, but perhaps there is a little bit of time to, to examine this further. And other, one question, there was something on the slide about this does not replace the underlying land use plan, and I have to wonder what the impact of, of that statement is. But anyway, unfortunately, there are so few citizens who come out to these things, but those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Pantholoff from Herschel Fleischer, and I represent the George Washington Village property owner, Augustine South Associates. I'm not accustomed to being here and commenting during the public comment segment, so forgive me if I, if I drop the ball here, but I will try to be quick, which is the advantage to you guys, obviously. And again, I appreciate your time, appreciate staff's time on this. There's been, obviously, an extensive amount of time and effort put into reviewing this, and based on, obviously, our prior comments in our last meeting regarding our comprehensive plan amendment that we proposed, we had proposed to address this proposed overlay, I'm trying not to use the word proposed too often tonight, in moving our residential units north from the runway by 3,000 feet. It's also made some other adjustments, including noise mitigation adjustments as part of our proffer statement, as you all know. One of the issues that did come up in the staff review in regards to this is the non-compatibility, if you will, of 360 units in the H3 zone area, which is to the northwest, which is northwest of the airport area. It's adjacent to the Approach Zone 2 corridor. In, in essence, the H3 zone, I'm sure you have seen the definitions, where a portion of the traffic pattern, returning improvements occur, and it's also where louder, louder noise occurs in regards to approaching aircraft. One of the things that we would ask respectfully for staff to look at, is I didn't see any of this analysis in the staff report, is whether or not the, the altitude pattern for the H3 zone could be raised. In that regard, if that could occur, it may eliminate this non-compatibility issue of about 360 units, which is significant, not to mention the non-compatibility or additional review that would be required for commercial in the H3 zones. There's two impacts we need to take a look at. But if that could be raised to a point that it would minimize the impact on the non-compatibility issue, not to mention the fact, I understand if it's higher, I'm not an air, an air expert, but my understanding, if it's higher, not only could it address the non-compatibility issue, it also increases the public safety component and it reduces noise. So this could be a very positive thing if we could take a look at that. Let's not forget that one-fourth of the land within the 4,443 acres in which the overlay encompasses is George Washington Village. So we do have a role here, and we do, and we are going to be impacted. And I think that we've adjusted our plan to be good neighbors and to adjust the airport's future goals, which we support. I think we all want an airport that's going to be successful. I believe the genesis of this occurred in the '70s to have an airport in Stafford County. The location, I think, was eventually determined in the late '80s. Construction started in the late '90s, and it was finished in 2001, so it's been existing for 14 years. During that period of time, $41 million has been invested in the airport facilities, not to mention $60 million at Mountain View Interchange, or Centerport Interchange, I should say. So we all want this to be successful, we want to be good neighbors, and we hope that you can take a look at that H3 component. Thank you very much, your time.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? With that, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and bring this back in. I did note that if, if there was any items there that the staff might felt that they could address, that were heard of, that could address immediately, or possibly give an indication of some follow-on information that could be made available. I do know we have a couple of points, as was presented in staff report, that we might be coming back with some further clarifying or reinforcing commentary, so that might require that this gets deferred and come back. But, Mr. Aff, if you could, from any of the notes you took?
Sure, yes. To answer some of the questions, the first question on how did we derive the acreage for each of the, the land use, the acreage of land use within each of the zones, that was done through our GIS analysis, basically overlaying the airport map against the, the land use plan and zoning plan. So that's kind of an easy evaluation there. And then on the question of, and suggestion of overlapping the, this overlay zone with the George Washington Village project, we've, we have done that, and that map actually is posted on the Planning and Zoning webpage.
Does it reflect the latest proposal in the configuration?
It, I believe it does.
Okay, very good.
I will check that and, and-
Thank you.
Make sure it's, and it, and that's on the Planning and Zoning webpage, and there's a link to the George Washington Village application, and that map is added with the application. And there was also the question of clarification on the statement that this plan does not replace the underlying, underlying land use plan. That means that, you know, if the land use plan has recommendations for areas to be agricultural, for business and industry, for urban development, for suburban, so those recommendations would not go away. You have the overlay that is, covers every single possible land use. So we may have in the overlay a recommendation that might support commercial development or office development in an area that's designated rural on the, on the land use plan. And so that rural designation may not support that office development, given, given that, or underlying land use designation. So that is all I'm able to address at this-
Did the airport study or report, did that work, anywhere in that final product, did it have a recap of any of the public participants or public attendees or public comments that were made?
The final report does not-
Doesn't refer to that?
That was more so done through the update process and the committee process.
Okay, very good.
Chairman, still the density thing.
Yeah, say again?
The density issue?
What's that? Well, we still have those two open comments about clarifying, clarifying the 1 to 3-plus, which I think staff would probably need to come back next time and give us, plus probably clarifying, narrative clarification of the intent with the AP3 to ensure we, that's not misunderstood. There was also the comment about H3 and altitude patterns being raised. Do you have any knowledge of that? Is that something you'd have to look into?
I'd have to look into-
Okay, that's fair. I just, please.
Somebody from the airport, can they answer that, or a pilot?
You didn't know you had speaking role, did you?
Yeah.
Let's see, the H3, Hamilton Palmer-
Thank you, sir.
1500 Caroline Street, City's representative on the Airport Authority. The H3 zoning up there that was discussed earlier, that was part of a rezoning that was done back in the early '80s, and that had to do with Augustine North, South, and Central. And the northern part was R1 zoning, the central portion was, I'm going to say, multifamily zoning, which a portion of it is going to be in that H3 zoning there. And then the southern portion was industrial and commercial.
There was, there was a question on the altitude pattern of that, where the circles, are those restricted, limited?
And that's the FAA, and actually, Lynda, you want to address that?
If we can just get an initial comment on it, and then we can always do some follow-up.
Lynda Kirkland, 10 Fallingwater Court, member of the Airport Authority. Typical, or not typical, but the standard aircraft pattern altitude across all typical airports is 1,000 feet above the ground level. So the existing pattern at Stafford Regional Airport right now is 1,200 feet above mean sea level, and that would apply to the pattern on the north side of the runway as well. Those are standard altitudes.
For both the small and the large aircraft?
Yes. Well, the large aircraft pattern usually would have another 500-foot buffer in some instances, but 1,000 feet AGL is usually the standard pattern altitude at, at most airports.
So it would typically then be the 1,000 for the small and 1,500 for the large?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then if I could just, just, I learn every day. And, and that is, is that a suggested? Is that a required within a certain tolerance level, or?
It's, the pattern altitude is set based on terrain and other obstacles and things like that. Currently, ours are at 1,000 feet for both patterns on the, on the south side of the runway. What, the FAA would typically come in, do some sort of site survey, analysis of obstacles, and then set the pattern altitude for that particular site. Local geography might apply if there are obstacles-
So in this case, they've come in, they've looked, and they're-
That is what has been set on, on our current pattern, yes.
Okay, got it, understood. Thank you very much for that clarification. Very good. So it's, we do have, we at minimum have a couple of things that we need to get a little bit of language clarification coming back on. I, I don't know if there's some other particularly open items outside that at this point for staff.
I think Daryl should make the motion.
Yeah, I think we, to get the, because, so it sounds like both those things would not be more restrictive, so there are eligible changes we can make to what's been posted, but it'd probably be good to have that clarification of whatever additional intent before we would take any action one way or another on it.
All right. And then we're going to close the public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to defer till the next meeting.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a motion to defer to the 22nd, seconded by Mr. Gibbons for the comment. Mr. English?
No, sir.
Mr. Gibbons? Any other member? Okay, we do have a couple of open questions asking staff to come back on some clarification. I'm sure they will raise anything else that comes up in the intervening time so that we can, we'll need to act on this the next time, because that'd be the 22nd, still have a few days till the deadline. All who are in favor of the motion to defer this 22nd signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? No? That's eight, number, that's item number 763 for the 22nd of April, so we got this. Just for the record.
Can you order breakfast?
Yeah. So with this, we'll move on to item number five, the Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, proposed ordinance 01510. Ms. Baker?
Mr. Chairman, this is a fairly short item, so I don't have a presentation, I'm just going to brief you all on this.
Would this be considered a housekeeping item?
Somewhat, yep. Our farming market item?
So item number five is an amendment to the zoning ordinance with regard to farmers' markets. As you all recall, in 2012, the Board did adopt amendments to the code which established definition for farmers' markets and set the zoning districts which they are permitted in. Generally, those are your agricultural zones, commercial zones, and your mixed-use zones. We have since had requests from the Woodstream Homeowners Association, they would like to establish a farmers' market in their civics, their clubhouse, basically, which has parking and, and room to have a farmers' market, however, their zone are too. So they did request, and the Board of Supervisors authorized the change to the, the code for the Planning Commission's consideration. So staff did actually go ahead and include the additional R1, R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts for consideration. The, we would note that we've added a requirement in there that, within the residential zones, that the farmers' markets would be established either within open space areas or in community spaces. So that is the gist of the amendment.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Baker? Yes, please, Ms. Cole.
Yes, Kathy, or Ms. Baker. Having served on the AG Commission, I asked, last time this came up, if all the language and rulings and ordinances that apply to farmers' market would apply to this. I know that it's been a while, but there was certain rather rigid consideration of how far out and whether it's locally grown and what's acceptable and what's not. And so I didn't see anything in there where they'd sort of spelled all that out for us, but, so is it, first of all, does this mean that everything that's in the ordinance existing has to be, and so that, again, I, I would feel better in getting a refresher as to what's acceptable or not.
Yes, they would be subject to everything that's in the ordinance. In addition to that, the AG, AG Committee does oversee all of the applications. They actually have to go through the, through them for approval. And each year, they do establish rules and regulations for farmers' markets, which includes things such as must be locally produced within 125 miles. They have to supply a vendor list with that information to the AG Committee, and they also do need to sign an affidavit that they have a market manager that's going to adhere to all these regulations. So each individual market can actually submit their own particular guidelines, because they're going to have different hours, different days that they're going to be operational. But it, they're basically going to follow those rules and regulations that are set in place by the committee.
Okay, and then just a couple other quick questions. Did, have we asked the AG Commission their view about expanding it? I know we, we had a long discussion about what areas it should be allowed in way back in the day, you and I sat for many a night on that. And so I just was curious, did they give any input about, you know, basically spreading this to an awful lot of different parcels?
Yes, we did take this to the committee last month, they had no issues with it. I know when it was originally established, it was actually a committee that was formed between members of the Planning Commission and the AG Committee. The primary concern in these residential districts was, could somebody do it on an individual lot at their home and have impacts? But with that clarification of having it within either open space area or community civic areas, that, that's the, it's intended to do away with that concern.
Okay. And then lastly, when I, when I left the AG Commission, we were in the midst of deciding about whether there's certain licenses and fees and taxes and sales taxes, and how, how to deal with all of that. And so I guess the question is, was that ever resolved? And that would also apply to any of these that decide to come up in their homeowners' association?
It, it would apply to this as well. It's, it's actually up to the market manager- It's, it's actually up to the market manager to address all of those issues. They're the ones that are going to be subject to, to certain guidelines and ensuring that their vendors are following those guidelines. So, we're not going to get into that level of detail, however, our rules and regulations established by the committee do mention that that's the, up to the market manager to oversee that.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. Baker? With that, I'll open this to a public comment, and remember, the public would like to speak on item number five, may come forward and do so at this time. Same spiel applies, if you'd state your name and address. Three minutes green, one minute yellow, zero minutes red.
Hi, Elaine Callender, six twenty-two Lancaster Street. I think this is great. It encourages local production of produce, promotes healthy living. It's a great educational opportunity for adults and children. It creates a feeling of community. All kinds of positives come from this, and so I urge you to pass it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else likes to speak? Okay. With that, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and bring it back into the Planning Commission. Yes, Mr. Gibbons? Motion recommending approval of proposed ordinance zero one five ten by Mr. Gibbons, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Further comment, Mr. Gibbons? Mr. Cohen?
No, sir.
Any other member? All those in favor of the motion to recommend approval signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None opposed? We move forward. If I could, just do a little unorthodox. How many folks are here for item number ten? It's Saratoga Woods preliminary subdivision plan. That's okay, very good. Any, how many folks are here for item number eleven? Okay. How many folks are here for item number seven? Okay. Then I'd like to, if, as long as nobody objects, I'd like to move the new business, so move items ten and eleven ahead of number seven. If we could, do we need a motion for that? No, we can just kind of do it as long as there's no objection? Well, we're done with the public hearing process. That was the last item of public hearing on number five. No, six is deferred to the twenty-second of April.
It's been continued to date specific.
It's been advertised to date specific twenty-second April, so it's. So, since item number six has been deferred to the twenty-second of April, what I'd like to do is move to ten to eleven, and I think same representative for the applicants is representing both for number ten and for number eleven, and we prefer to do number eleven first. We're good. So, let's move on to item number eleven, WAI one five one five zero six two zero, Johnson Division at Hartwood. Ms. Baker?
Mr. Chair, we have Will Sugg to present this, and you have not, may not have met our planner yet.
I don't think we have. And I was trying to throw him off by changing the order, and it couldn't mess you up. Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, item eleven is a reverse frontage waiver for the Johnson Division at Hartwood project.
Excuse me, computer, please.
Yeah, oh, sorry, thank you. Computer, please? Thanks.
All right, can I have the next slide?
Oh, we're going to do ten after eleven. The, app, no, we will do number item, item number eleven, item number ten, then item number seven.
All righty.
Yes, we're always this bad. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, it's on Assessor Parcel thirty-five fifty-five. The size of the parcel is seventy-nine point nine five acres. It's zoned A one in Election District, Hartwood, and the location is east of Hartwood Road, approximately 375 feet north of Shackelford, Well Road, excuse me. That's the location map. All right, the applicant is proposing a minor subdivision for five lots off Hartwood Road. Section twenty-two one fifty-one of the subdivision ordinance states, "Any development of a residential subdivision adjacent to a public street that has been classified by the Virginia Department of Transportation as a primary collector or arterial road shall contain reverse frontage lots." Hartwood Road is classified as a collector road by VDOT requiring reverse frontage lots. Okay, Assessor Parcel thirty-five fifty-five is the parent parcel, which currently contains a residential home and outbuildings. Lots one and two will have a shared driveway, where lot one will retain the original home site. Lots three and five will have a shared ingress egress access easement, excuse me. The waiver request is for lot four, where a shared driveway cannot be obtained. A reverse frontage exception may be granted by the agent pursuant to the ordinance where lots have a specific disadvantage of topography or orientation. Since lot four does not propose a shared driveway, it is not eligible for an exception. Therefore, the applicant has requested a waiver for the number of lots required to share a driveway due to site distance issues along Hartwood Road and parcel orientation. The proposed subdivision lots are not contiguous due to existing wetlands and two existing streams on property. The remaining parent parcel thirty-five fifty-five has a proposed seventeen-lot cluster subdivision in which lot four limits coordination of a shared driveway or alignment of any future roadway connection. Typically, shared driveways and easements exist adjacent to property lines, but the site distance along Hartwood Road was determined to be hazardous for parcel thirty-five fifty-five and lot four preventing installation of a shared driveway. Major subdivision developments do not permit ingress egress easements or PAEs per section twenty-two one seventy-six F of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, a connection to the proposed subdivision is not permitted. Staff recommends approval of the waiver request for section twenty-two one fifty-one, reverse frontage of the subdivision ordinance due to the parcel configuration and site distance along Hartwood Road.
Questions for staff? Mr. English?
All right, can you go back to the?
Computer, please? Backwards?
Probably the second slide, Kathy. Yeah, on the, can you show me where the driveway's going to go on this, on that, when they reac?
On this?
Yeah, is that, just show me where they're looking at.
If you, maybe do it the cursor?
Actually, go.
Back, back, back.
Right there, okay. All right, that's all.
Right on the end of the property line. Okay? Very good. Other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners and staff, my name is Deborah Ray Carnes. I'm an attorney and land use planner with Lemming &amp; Healy. I'm going to do a very short presentation with the understanding that you guys can ask more questions. This is the request of George and Robin Johnson, who've lived in Hartwood for some long period. It's a five-lot minor subdivision that you guys won't be reviewing. Their family home will be one of the five lots. We're here for the waiver request because one of the five lots cannot have a shared access because of topography and site distance. So, under the theory that one picture equals more than 1,000 words of an attorney's statement, can I have the slide shown on the visualizer, please?
Computer, please?
I heard a question regarding where the proposed entrance would be, and I'm going to skip to the second slide.
Next slide.
That's the proposed entrance on the very southern end of the site on Hartwood Road. It has excellent line of sight, approximately 500 feet. We would compare it to where the joint entrance would have to be as we go to the next slide.
Is the orientation of picture then standing at the entrance?
I would say yes, looking south. So, facing Hartwood, looking south.
So, you're showing the 500-foot site distance from where the entrance would be?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Going to slide three, this would be the location of the shared entrance. There is approximately 375 feet of site distance, but encumbered by the heavy topography, a much less desirable location. For that reason, we are asking for a waiver to allow lot four not to have a shared entrance. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, back, back to the commissioners. Any other question or commentary for staff or anyone else, or?
This is in the upper reaches of Hartwood, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
It's mine, you want me to go ahead?
Yes, so cheers.
I want to make a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the waiver request. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Boswell. Further comment, Mr. English?
No, sir.
Further comment, Mr. Boswell? Any other member? This is one of those few things we actually get to approve and do versus just referring forward, so there's, the motion before us is to approve the waiver, waiver request for subdivision ordinance, section twenty-two test one fifty-one, reverse frontage. It's WAI one five one five zero six two zero. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Are there any opposed? None opposed? Passes six zero. Thank you all very much. We'll now move on to item number ten under New Business, S U B one four one five zero three four five, Saratoga Woods Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Ms. Baker?
Yes, please recognize Ms. Ennis for the presentation.
Very good, thank you.
Give me just a moment, please. We're having technical difficulties.
Computer, please?
Just a moment?
Technical difficulty, please? Don't go to the computer, please? Pictures of our dog on there?
There we go. Where's Mr. Harvey?
Is that my Facebook page?
It's Leanne's Facebook page.
I wish I knew how to do Facebook.
Now we're ready for the computer, please.
So, Kathy, you're moving the screens?
If you prefer.
I can tell you, I'm not doing anything.
This is what moves the screens? Okay. Got it. Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, it's been a long time. I'm offering you guys item number eight, item number ten, it's a preliminary subdivision plan for Saratoga Woods. It's located on Assessors Parcels thirty-six fifty-seven. It's located on the south side of Mount Olive Road, approximately one mile east of Poplar Road. It's approximately 198 acres, and it's currently zoned A one. They're proposing to cluster this subdivision, and they're proposing 58 single-family lots. My staff report has an error. I wanted to put it in the Garrisonville District, and it belongs in the Hartwood District.
It'll be like that?
Yes. I think I've done that before. This is the aerial, aerial map, where you can see that everything is located around this property is A one. It's all rural through there. This, again, is a cluster con, the cluster, the Cluster Concept Plan was approved in March of 2014, and all the lots are a minimum of 1.5 acres. All the lots are served by private wells and drain fields. There'll be approximately ninety-nine acres of open space. The subdivision will be served by three streets off a single access from Mount Olive Road. Two streets will be stubbed to abutting properties to the east and the west. Roads will be built to VDOT standards. I do, for, the stub streets are for your future extensions. There'll be a signage that'll be up that says future, that the roads could be extended. That'll be on the construction plan. There is signage that will be provided along the lots, restricting no parking along the roadway because of the width of the road. The roadway is 24 and 20 feet perspectively, which is permitted by VDOT with no parking signs. The HOA will be maintaining the no parking signs on the lots because they're located on the lots, because they're not going to be located within the right-of-way, so VDOT will not be maintaining those. This site is utilizing IMPs or BMPs for stormwater management. It's vegetated areas in, using level spreaders. There are wetlands on the RPA on the site. There are two lots that have RPA at the rear of the proposed boundaries. Signage will be placed on the property identifying the RPA and limitation. It's been verified by staff that the wetlands delineation was studied during normal precipitation. The wetlands on the site are not being impacted by this proposed project. The zoning ordinance requires 25 feet from the rear of the house to the RPA and wetlands. Staff stated that the current wetland studies showed more wetlands than the previous study done in 2004. Therefore, the development, the developer agreed.
Two thousand fourteen?
There was a study done in 2004. Uh-huh, and this, this one that was done in 2014 had more wetlands on it. So, this is more strict than what was shown on the 2004. It was done, I think, with the.
Is that because of global warming?
I think it was done with the crucible, the study, but I don't know about the warming part. The developer agreed to put a note on the preliminary plan to place the signage every 75 feet versus the 100-foot requirement for the RPA restrictions. Our ordinance requires that signage be put up every 100 feet along the RPA if there's lots that are impacted by it, and the developer, per note on the site, on the preliminary plan, agreed to put it every 75 feet to ensure that everybody's aware of what's going on back there. Staff would like the commission to know that the A one by right zoning would have permitted 66 conventional lots out there on this property. All the lots would have been a minimum of three acres, and there would have been no open space. A one does not require, conventional does not require open space. Clustering the subdivision reduced the lots to 58 lots, all being a minimum of one and a half acres. That's the average size. To be, and requiring 50% open space, so they are having 99 acres of open space out there that's going to be green area. By right, they would, we wouldn't have gotten the 99 acres of open space. So, in that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I've always loved this, when you're dealing with A one. But, when you've got 66 lots, you still have open space, it's just not.
The open space is on the lots, yes, sir.
It's not contiguous.
Right.
But, it still is open.
We do require 80% open space on lots in A one on the lot itself, but it is not put into an HOA, it's not maintained by anybody but the homeowner, and you can't trespass onto it.
But, I don't want the statement saying, Mr. Chairman, you've got 66 lots with no open space, because that's not correct.
Okay, very good.
Yes, that's true. No open space that would be dedicated to an HOA or maintained, and it's not contiguous. Let's see, the drain, all these lots are still going to be served by drain fields, they're going to have the reserved drain fields as well as a well location, well locations on the lots, which is all that is required for the conventional lots. Again, these are, these drain fields and wells are, will be done at permits, and they're attained by the Health Department prior to the issuance of the bill. attained by the health department prior to the issuance of the building permit. So those applications from the health department are good for 18 months, once they've been assigned, for the drain fields and the wells. The staff also would like the commission to know that the DCL, DCSL, which is our design manual for landscaping, does not require landscaping buffers for residential areas. So we do not require residential to buffer against residential. They did show over on the, over on the east side, this area here does, does have open space, so there is a little bit of open space between this homeowner and the parcel. There's like, I measured, it's like 20 feet of open space between the two. So that's...
Please, Ms. Cohen.
Just a quick question. I was looking at the same part on the map. So, for example, just where you drew the lines, lots 1 through 4, on our maps, it says primary and reserve, and it has certain areas. Is it that the people who buy those lots really can't do anything with that back parcel of the lot?
No, you can.
Okay. So basically, you could build straight up to, other than that tiny little buffer area?
Yes, they, you know, just like you can. You can build all the way up to your property line, and you can put a shed all the way in the back, next to the property line. There are zoning restrictions or requirements that you have to be five or, I think it's five feet or 10 feet off the property line for accessory dwellings.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Therefore, staff, based on all the reviews and everything, staff recommends approval of Saratoga Woods preliminary subdivision plan.
Excellent. Yes, Mr. English?
Ms. Ennis, what are the two lots that are, you said have RPAs in the rear?
Okay. These two lots here, I don't know the lot numbers, can't read them, but those two lots have RPA on them. It's all the way in the back, and the RPA signage will be every 75 feet going across The wetlands, there are wetlands on these lots here, but they're not being impacted.
Okay.
That's it.
Other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Gibbons, please.
The comments that came out in the public tonight was more or less the water.
Mm-hmm.
And what always concerned me when you do clusters in A1, you're putting more units closer together, does that affect the table at all?
Do we know if that affects the table at all in cluster?
I talked to Tommy Thompson, and he certifies what the well driller permits submit in. He said there was a rare case of a man having to obtain three different applications of drilling, drilling out there and off of Mount Olive Road. And he said it was a rare application that they had to get three of them, but I'm...
Did he comment on the impact of a cluster versus a traditional three acre lot?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
I mean, the cluster concept plan was approved a little over a year ago.
Well, the health department did review this preliminary plan as well.
And you will have recorded on all the plaits the fact that a permit for installation of private well has not been issued, and a building permit will be denied unless such a permit is obtained?
Yeah, that is an ordinance requirement. That will be on there.
The biggest question that the people had, that we got out there is water. So how do you know if we got adequate for the cluster?
Or even for the by right?
Yeah, you don't think you would now.
And so you popped along?
I think the applicant might be able to address that a little bit further, because he had, as I said in my staff report, he had a study done, and he might be able to address that a little bit further if you guys would like to direct some answers to him or his attorney.
No, that's, that was what I was going to ask.
Other questions for staff before the applicant? Okay, applicant, please. Thank you very much, Ms. Ennis.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, and staff. My name is Deborah Ray Carnes with Lemming and Healy, and I am representing the preliminary plan application for Saratoga Woods. So, just briefly, I'd like to thank staff for their assistance throughout the process. It is a cluster application for 58 dwelling units on 198 acres, with 98 acres being in contiguous open space. Can I have my slide?
Computer, please.
Please? And not to belabor the point, but even though conventional development does have open space on every lot, I think there is value to the county to having contiguous open space, provides more value for the environment, it provides an opportunity for wildlife habitat. I think I'm going to go right to the issue that was raised during citizens' time. We heard citizens very passionately ask for information confirming that this site could handle wells for every lot without impacting adjacent properties. And I want to tell you that the applicant was equally passionate about making sure that he had the all-available information to make the decision, because he doesn't want to spend money developing this site and then have problems selling lots. And I want to describe the process. The applicant talked to Tommy Thompson, first and foremost, the health department official who has probably the most intimate knowledge about wells in the county long-term. Mr. Thompson said there was really no problem with lots locating wells, okay? That the memorable instance occurred in, what, 2003, 2004 with the drought, a very dry time, and some people experienced shortage of water. That usually involved a bored well, and most all of the wells being dug now are not bored, they're drilled. Furthermore, the applicant reviewed all of the records of wells within 2,000 feet of this property, and found that 34 out of 35 of the sites had drilled wells and were averaging 14 gallons per minute, which is pretty good. This did not evidence any problem. But further, we talked to a geologist, and he tells us that well, successful well drilling involves several things. It involves the soils, and it involves the ability of the area to recharge sufficient water. And one of the factors is the 98 acres of open space that will contribute to not having problems with water availability. Based on these findings, the applicant felt comfortable that, with the conclusion, that there will be no problems finding available water for wells, and there will be no problems with any adjacent properties being impacted. I can run over a few other issues, but I really think that was the question that the planning commission wanted addressed. Bottom line, the health department official says, has not indicated any problem. Staff has determined that all issues, all requirements of this application have been met. This is a by right application, and although I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, we'd like to ask for the planning commission's approval.
Questions for the applicant? Yes, please, Mr. Gibbons.
Hate to belabor this, but you've got 58 lots, sir. What if you cannot find water on a lot? What are you going to do with that lot?
If, as noted on the plan, if a well permit cannot be obtained, an occupancy permit cannot be issued.
Then what happens to land? Does that become part of the open space?
It will remain unbuilt.
But that ain't answering my question. Does it become part of the open space?
It will become unbuilt until such time that a well could be dug. And the only, if you think I'm not answering your question, the only reason I'm not, I'm saying it won't become open space is because open space is specifically designated on the preliminary plan, and it won't be designated as open space on the preliminary plan. But for all intents and purposes, it will not, nothing will be, no habitable structure will be constructed upon it.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant?
You know, the question's been raised, and I think the citizens asked very good. You know, the study, I didn't see the study that was done on it. I guess that's my fault, I should have gone and pulled it. But we've had problems up in that area. I'm just concerned about, before we go too far, if Thompson says that, then, I don't...
I think...
You mean, when the aquifer goes dry, let me tell you, you had problems up there a quarter of a bit.
Yeah, but I think if you did 60, I mean, if you did 58 bored wells, which they're not allowing bored wells anymore, I think then you would have an issue, because a bored well, it only goes 90 to 100 feet, I think it is. When you go to a drill well, a drill well goes 200, 300 feet. So I don't think you're going to have that issue, Bob. I think, I mean, what I can gather from Thompson, and then just from, there's subdivisions all around it, and I'm sure they have, now they have drilled wells, and I don't know, I think that's the state ordinance now that you have to require to drill well. They don't allow you to do bored wells for that reason, because the wells do go dry, if I'm correct on that, so. And the subdivisions around it, how many subdivisions are around it right now in that area? Do you know, or Leanne?
I'm being told there's two.
Two subdivisions, okay. It's more so, okay. Okay.
Further questions for the applicant?
I mean, within a couple of miles...
We need you to microphone, if you could, please, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Within a couple of miles, there's about seven subdivisions that comprise of about 250 lots that we, over a 30-year period, where there's been, you know, built out. Besides what Deborah Ray spoke of, the 2,000-foot radius where we compiled all the well logs, but within two miles, there's like 250. But I guess, in speaking of the wells, you can, you know, it's just really, I mean, over the years I've been doing this...
Could you state your name and who you're with?
Alex McAllister, owner of the company that's developing this project, Saratoga Woods But, but for about 20-year period, I, the companies that I had, we used to put the wells in, and we would put in as many as 50 wells a year. And it's really a matter of, we'll get, you'll get water, and I know the question you have is about, well, is it affecting the aquifer? But, I mean, from the people we talked to, and the well drillers, the geologists, there's plenty of wat, there's going to be...
But I never heard a well driller never say he wouldn't drill.
Yeah, but we'll, but you, but you get, it's the bored wells are really where the problems lie. That's the problem. And when you dig a drilled well, the drilled well, the artesian well, the people that, where you may experience a problem in an artesian or drilled well, it's the same thing, is when they hit, when they don't go deep enough. You might go down 250 feet, 300, you hit water, you get a supply of water, but the driller doesn't encourage the person they're drilling for to get enough reservoir. They might, you should go down maybe another 100 feet, and you can build up some reservoir. That's what we always would advise to do. So if you do that, you can get some extra reservoir, and if everyone did that, there'd be plenty of, plenty of water in the aquifer out there if you just plan ahead. And that's what, in that area of Stafford, we know that, if you plan to go a little bit deeper, and there are some isolated instances, like Tommy Thompson said, where there's a few pockets around there, you may, you'll have some cases where you may have to go 600, 700 feet, we know that. And that's happened. I mean, and there's also some cases where you might go 150 feet and hit, hit a well, and it might be pumping 80 gallons a minute, and you might go 700, 600, 700 feet, and it's pumping four or five gallons a minute. But anyway, I didn't, not to keep on going with it, but it's really the bored wells where the problem is. But I don't think the aquifer's going to be, is going to be the issue.
But we'll be happy to answer any other questions you have.
And you said, and you said the open space being that open space helps with the water
supply.
The recharge.
Recharging of that, so, and...
That's what, and the specific location of the homes in a cluster design.
Right.
That's what the geologist...
And you have by right, by right, you have 66 conventional if you did, is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Other questions for the applicant?
Just, if I could, real quickly. Earlier in the evening, you had some people who were impacted or had seen other developments say nice things about it. So I just would, I'm curious if you'll consider, not the second, but lots 1 through 5 are fairly close, and they're all around 1.54-ish acres. Whereas if they were a little closer to the plain 1.5, that would leave a little bit more of the buffer for those people next door, which were, which people are complimenting you on the other ones. So, and then likewise, 17 through 20 were closer to the wetlands. And again, those are, and 14 and 15 on that other side, again, those are sort of, when you said you were buttressing it, it wouldn't impact it. But again, especially if it's, the lots are in the wetlands, and those homeowners can't do anything with it. So it might even be beneficial just to make those lots shorter, instead of being 1.54, maybe 1.5, and then that .4 makes it a little bit more pristine. It's just something to think of. And then since Mr. Apicella is not here, I'll say something that he's really big on is just how nice it is to see the open space very together, not parcelling up or taking, you know, great, we put a retention pond, so we're going to count that. And I know he's very big on that, I know I've been echoing that as well, but since he's not here to say it, I'll say it for him.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, very good, thank you very much. There were references, I just have one generalized question for staff, Ms. Baker. There were references to water studies. Is there a county water study? Is that what they were referencing?
There have, there was a groundwater management plan, there's also been a groundwater study. They were done back in the early 2000s.
And how often are those done? Is that just a sporadic thing? I'm just wondering for general information, because that was referenced in some of the earlier commentary.
The one was actually done at the time of the drought because of the drought it was in.
So there's not a recurring timeframe?
No.
Okay. That'd be something I'll have to just...
There were some recommendations that came out of that plan for ordinance amendments and such. None of that was ever done, but we'd be happy to supply that study to you all with the...
Yeah, I'd like, I know personally, I'd just like to see a copy of it, I wasn't aware. Thank you very much, okay. This is, so thus, what do we want to do? Yep, Hartwood?
I'm making a motion to approve S U B 14150345.
So, motion made to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Saratoga Woods, S U B 14150345. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, it's not, Robert's rules, there's just not a process for that, sir. I apologize. Okay, second by Mr. Boswell. Is there further comment, Mr. English?
No, I just think that, I think he's, if he's going to do, if he didn't do 58, do 66, and I think he's left to the open space, and I think if he doesn't get the wells drilled, then he won't get a permit, so. Well, drain fields, so that would leave that empty lots.
You have to have the perm, I just wanted to let you all know, you had to, you have to have the health department's approval for the permit in order to get the building permit. So they can't even build the house without the permit from the health department.
Very good. Any further comment, Mr. Boswell? Any other member? All's in favor of the motion, which is to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Saratoga Woods, S U B 14150345. Signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, with that, we move on to unfinished business. Item number seven, the discussion on the cluster development standards within Virginia.
Erica Ely will give a brief...
Erica Ely will give briefing on this.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick overview here. So-
You're in charge.
As the commission is aware-
Go ahead.
Chairman left.
Goodness, secretary.
Since November, the planning commission's been discussing various options to establish provisions for cluster subdivisions that receive increased density. These are permitted in the R1 zoning district as a conditional use. And over the last several meetings, we have developed draft language. And in this staff report you've received for this meeting, staff revised the draft language, which was discussed at the meeting, the last meeting held on March twenty-fifth, to a final draft form, which includes the recommendations by Quantico, which are related to land use compatibility around military installations, and the recommendations by fire and rescue for a minimum ten-foot side yard setback, or the installation of sprinklers in each dwelling unit. So I don't know if you, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to go through each of these criteria. You did receive them in the staff report.
We'd like you to go through them all in very detail. No, no, I think we better, sorry.
I will just say that the proposed language, it's supposed to be included in chapter two as a new policy, one-point-two-point-twelve. And then I would like to just go to the last slide here, because these are, these are changed from, well, actually, the last criteria has been changed from the staff report. Originally, we didn't have the last part regarding residential fire suppression system. So it says now, the minimum side yard setback for each residential lot should be ten feet or a residential fire suppression system.
And just, I think this is just to confirm that this was in ten. I think we left last time, but not very clearly. We left last time with the intent, yeah, it makes sense to do that, ten feet on each side, and, but it didn't come across very clear to staff, so I appreciate staff's efforts to add that once we highlighted. So thank you. I understand why it wasn't in there, but, so I appreciate it.
And then also, just as a note, we did coordinate with the planner at Quantico to kind of tweak the language in the criteria that's above there, but it's pretty much substantially the same thing as before.
Isn't the planner at Quantico a former employee of the planning staff?
Not, well, Mr. Chair-
Not this one.
Not this, not the one I worked with.
Conflict of interest. Very good. Bobby, you're always causing trouble.
He was a man, so it's not the same person.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Chair, I was just looking at the notes here, and in regards to the ten-foot setback, the rest of that sentence is not complete.
Computer, please.
The minimum side yard setback for each residential lot should be ten feet, or a residential fire suppression system should be provided within each dwelling unit.
In the notes that I have.
So we will, we'll be going by the one that is, as represented on the slide for the record. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bailey, in the staff report, that final part of the sentence was not there. That's why I wanted to go to the slide and just make it clear that we did add that final part.
So for the record, any action we should take would be based upon the slide that is presented tonight for the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for raising that. Any other comments? Mr. Cohen?
Oh, just, yeah, thank you, Ms. Bailey, and thank you, because that was something I harped on last meeting, was the either-or, so thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gibbons, please. Motion recommending, motion to recommend approval of the cluster development standards as presented with the modified verbiage as was presented tonight by Mr. Gibbons, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Further comment, Mr. Gibbons? Mr. Cohen?
Just, thank you very much. And I know Mr. Appicella has worked very diligently on this over the years, so while he's not here, I think it's appropriate that we should move on it, because it's something he cares about.
Very good. Any other member?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Ms. Bailey.
Just as a note, this still is going to have to go forward to public hearing.
Public hearing.
So just to make sure that you're not approving it as is, but scheduling that.
Oh, okay, over to unfinished business. So to qualify, if the motion are just to modify or to clarify that this is a motion to recommend forward for public hearing with the modified language as was presented tonight. Mr. Gibbons, that was good? Yes. Mr. Cohen, that was your second? Very good, thank you very much. Any other comment? All's in favor of the motion to recommend, motion to approve forwarding and advertising for public hearing, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Very good, yahoo, seven, six, zero. No, we're gonna keep going. We're gonna get all these. Planning Director's report, please.
I was gonna ask if we're going to take up item nine on the urban development area, or is that going to be-
Oh, is that still in, did I miss that?
Okay.
Yeah, oh, committee report, yes, I'm sorry. Now I'm with you. Yep, we'll do a committee report.
And I have no report.
Thank you very much. County attorney's report?
I have no report at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Committee reports? Mr. Cohen, you wanna pick that up? Very good.
Yes, we have our comp plan. We had our meeting last Wednesday, a week ago. We are done with the work, we believe, for the subcommittee. Mr. Zeraf will give sort of an overview. I believe he gave a package to everybody at their lot this evening. We did not hear from anybody on the first bundle of joy that we gave you two weeks ago, and so we'll just go forward with this latest bunch. And I'll just ask Mr. Zeraf, he'll take over.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, so you've received a draft version of chapters one, two, and three of the comp plan 2010-2030 document. This is the results of the subcommittee. These changes mainly are focusing on the amendments regarding the urban development areas to transition and amend them, to refer them, to them as targeted growth areas. We're still working on the other updates that would qualify as the five-year, as the five-year update. That involves a lot of small adjustments to update factual information and recent adjustments to some of the maps in chapters four, five, and six. So what you have, this plan, it's, these chapters you have, it's in track change version, so you're gonna see all the versions that are gonna be deleted and added. The chapter, changes to chapters one and two, they're basically changes that amend, remove references to urban development areas and change, changes the reference to targeted growth areas. And chapter three, which is the land use chapter, that's where you're gonna see the majority of the changes. The big kind of issues to note, this does change from seven UDAs to six targeted growth areas. So this does remove the Eskimo Hill urban development area. And then with the remaining six, there are adjustments to intensity of the different areas. Some have reduced intensity. Brook goes down to a lower intensity form of development. That was the desire of the board to kind of keep that in, so we kind of kept it in as more of a residential community that might be consistent with like, an R1 cluster type of subdivision that you might see. Then Leland, that was reduced somewhat to reflect the developing Leland Station subdivision, and then added some higher intensity residential in the remaining land. Then, in the remaining four targeted growth areas, you do get some areas where we have to increase intensity. And this is best reflected as far as a summary on page three dash twenty-one. That's where you can see the changes in the summary of the number of different types of residential units in each area. Because this plan does maintain a goal of half of the future, half of the projected growth over the next twenty years into these areas. And you have, we have less area now, so we had to increase the number of multifamily and townhouse units in some of the targeted growth areas to achieve that goal. And some of the other things in the general standards for the intro of the targeted growth area section, we added in some additional recommendations to develop smaller area plans for each of these areas, similar to what we've done in the courthouse area. Recommendations for phasing of targeted growth areas. And that, you can, you'll see extensive kind of description on that. That also starts on page three dash twenty-one. And that, in developing that, staff did go back to some of the prior work that the commission did. I guess it now goes back two years now, where some of the initial work we did, put forward some phasing. And so that is included, and it identifies near, mid, and long-term kind of recommended areas for development to occur, and provide some brief justification for those phasing, the phasing that is provided. And then, we do have a recommendation that development in these TGAs are fiscally balanced, that you, over the, over the long term of the development of these areas, that there's adequate commercial development to offset any resident, you know, the demands that are brought by the residential development that occurs in these areas. And then also, recommendation that any development in, that any of the targeted growth areas that are affected by the airport overlay, that development can form with the airport overlay guidelines. And of course, that would all be subject to that document being adopted as well. So those are some of the general changes that were incorporated. Some of the recent things to point out, with George Washington Village and staff, we went through and did an evaluation to make sure that all this development could fit with the amount of buildable area. And we discovered that George Washington Village did have a little less buildable area than was anticipated initially. So in George Washington Village, we had, you know, we have now are, you have three subareas, the kind of Embry-Mill associated area, and then there's an area, kind of the central area or south area, and then the business campus. And so we kind of combined the business campus and south area into one larger subarea, and provided an overall number of dwelling units and commercial development. The amount of commercial development is less than what we initially had, and so you kind of have more of an open, just overall recommendation for the amount of commercial and residential there. So that's worth taking a look at. And those are kind of the highlights. As I mentioned, we're working through the changes to chapter four, the transportation section, to update the latest kind of transportation data. Chapter five, the fiscal plants section, and chapter six, the existing conditions. So that will work to get to you at a future meeting, and, but that's what we have for you right now.
And again, the general timeline we were looking at.
And this is in, in our timeline, we wanted, in a perfect world, to be able to go tonight and say that we were going to push for a public hearing, but of course, our public hearings on April twenty-second are pretty full, pushing into the twenty-third. So always our timeline was that we would aim for April twenty-second to come back for us to say we want a May public hearing. And that way, preferably an early May public hearing, so that way we have enough time to digest and tweak if need be by the end of May, so that by the beginning of June, we met our timeline that the supervisors have done. So we went on, the subcommittee really went on the premise of try to aim for having this wrapped up early, so that we would have some room to give staff some time. They have done a phenomenal job. I think all three of us would just give them great appreciation for the amount of work they did. And I can't say enough for the whole area of phasing that they've dealt with, which is, quite honestly, not only listened to what was done two years ago, and listened to this body, but also, I think Mike and everybody else listened back to what, all of what was going on when they started the plan, which they put into things which people had talked about when the public had input, massive input, that the TGAs can do, but the UDAs wouldn't let us do. So I think that was amazing that they did that. And the financial aspect also is a lot of work that they've done a great job with.
Great. So certainly, if we, if we were able to address this and vote for whatever final version for public hearing on the twenty-second, that would give three weeks before we would meet again. So we'd probably be able to, as far as advertisement notice goes, be able to do it our first session in May?
That's possible, if there aren't a lot of changes, then we'll bring it to this meeting.
Okay. So, but what that adds to is a, I think, a criticality that, we look at this very closely, because if there is anything else to be modified, we need to really come prepared to address it next time we, next time we meet, and kind of be hopefully-
Mr. Chairman, the good point is that the board of supervisors knows they have a document now.
Yep.
It might not be the final, it might, has to be worse than it, but we met the goal. I mean, and Tom's done a good job. But the only thing I want to bring up again is what bothered, and the staff has addressed it. But the CIP is only ten years out, and we're talking a twenty-year comp plan. And the fiscal constraint of the CIP to growth really bothers us, because if, you know, Jeff wouldn't gut us this. We're fully bonded out right now.
Right.
And yet, we got eighty-nine thousand units on the books before we even get to go to the CGA.
I would just, and I don't, I appreciate all the work here, and I recognize those points. I would just, as an additive point, highlight, again, what is represented here is fifty percent of the future planned growth, maintaining consistency in how we're projecting growth, but fifty percent of the growth planned for in these areas, leaving another fifty percent to be in the other areas to absorb in other rezonings and changes, and to buy right, and to others that are not in these areas that have already been approved. And I would just highlight that that projection of growth is almost a fifty percent less projection of growth over twenty years than in each twenty-year period this county's experienced in the last half a century. So it's a, if you just look at the statistics, it's a fairly conservative growth. It is the growth projection, it's a consistent growth projection with what we always use, but it's much more conservative than we've ever experienced. And this is just attempting to absorb fifty percent of it into targeted areas that we think could best absorb it, so.
But the problem we got, though, is, we keep saying, is that we gotta start addressing the facts of life. If you look at the retail, it's downsizing. So you can't go in and say, like, George Washington Village, he's gonna have X amount of square footage, when that isn't true anymore. And the staff has put out all of the statistics on that. And then the other thing, Mr. Chairman, thanks to you, you put it out there, but if you look at that Washingtonian magazine article-
That's a lot more growth than we're planning for here.
The targeted area is us and Spotsylvania, so. But I don't know how you balance the commercial back to the, to what's going on.
I think this, even with their work here, which they've reduced the commercial projections in these areas by about fifty percent, I think it's a more realistic projection. But, yep, I mean-
But I don't know how you're gonna fund the growth. If you've got a magic wand, and you do very well up the road there on it.
County's gonna start buying lottery tickets, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Gibbons, and it's an excellent point, and other members, one of the things that we talked about at the very start of this process was that if, the board had given us some specific guidelines, that we were open to the idea of sending with our package a list of other areas that we think should be looked into and dealt with. And that one certainly is a superb one, and if anybody else has any other ones that they think would be good, that can go along with it, and it would buffer-
Very good.
-your points.
Back to the core for next time we come together, though. The key is deliberate review here by each of us, so that we're ready with whatever final commentary, and hopefully can move it forward to public hearing. But great work, tremendous work by staff as always, and great work.
When you look at it this year, and you look at that airport study, and then you look at this document-
Amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it is. You're right, what they've done. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the work, and we will all commend ourselves to deliberate review, so we'll be prepared for next time to close that out, the next stage. I have nothing further- I have nothing further for the chairman's report, I hope Steve is doing well. And with that, we'll move on, TRC, everybody have their stuff, their goodies? Okay, very good. Take a motion for approval of the February 11th minutes.
So move.
He beat you to it, Mr. Gibbons, I'll bet we'll give the second to Mr. Cohen. Any further comment, Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Cohen, any other member? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the February 11th minutes are approved. Anything else we missed? Ms. Baker?
I got one question, no.
Please, absolutely.
I backed off tonight, and I don't mind getting educated. When the gentleman here from Hartwood did not close the public hearing, and that was his motion, and the other gentleman deferred to saying, the public hearing is still open. You can receive comments up until the last day, the way you all worded.
So the George Washington Village?
Right. It was still an open project tonight. So, I don't think anybody would have.
So we, you're, you're saying, your belief is that we should have received comments on the item number six?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe when the motion was made, it was made to keep the public hearing open, and you have to do it to a specific date, so that we don't have to re-advertise. So when the public hearing is left open until April 22nd, it's for that date, not every meeting to that date. If we left it open without a specific date, we would have to re-advertise it in the paper for each meeting.
So we were okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, do what? I can't hear.
She, she was saying that if you just leave it open, but not to a specific date, it is open for every hearing, but you also have to advertise it for every hearing. But by the form of the motion that was taken last time, that left it open, but to a specific date, that advertises only that date, nothing else was re-advertised, so it's only heard again on that future established date.
Strike six.
Anything further, Ms. McLennan, Ms. Baker, anything else we missed? Folks, anybody? Anybody, anybody? Go on, go, okay, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.